Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting regular session on May 13th, 2025. We have two council members with excused absences, Councilmember Suma Dewiria and Ewan House. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Robinson?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian?
Here.
Councilmember Bargava?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
And Councilmember Lee?
Lee?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Bargava, could you lead us in the flag salute, please? Go ahead.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, religious stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In justic for all.
We have three proclamations tonight. The first one is the Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and that's being read by Councilmember Hamilton, and we'll have Su Hong come here and speak after. Then we have Older Americans Month, which will be read by me, and Andrea Klein will come and accept the proclamation. And then lastly, we have Building Safety Month, read by Deputy Mayor Malakutian. We have Greg Schrader and Kathy Baker accepting the proclamation. So let me invite Su Hong up to sit down while Councilmember Hamilton reads the proclamation. Go ahead and have a seat, and then we'll do pictures after the three of them are done.
Whereas the city of Bellevue takes pride in recognizing May 2025 as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander AANHPI Heritage Month, honoring the many generations of AANHPI individuals whose cultures, contributions, and legacies have shaped Bellevue and enriched communities across the nation. And whereas, since its official designation in 1992, AANHPI Heritage Month has provided an opportunity to celebrate the vibrant and diverse AANHPI communities representing a wide range of countries, islands, languages, and lived experiences. And whereas, the 2025 national theme, "A Legacy of Leadership and Resilience," honors the lasting impact of AANHPI leaders whose courage, innovation, and perseverance have strengthened our shared future and inspired generations to overcome barriers and pursue excellence. And whereas, AANHPI communities have faced and continue to confront discrimination, exclusion, and xenophobia, yet remain a powerful force for advocacy, cultural expression, and progress in Bellevue and beyond. And whereas Bellevue is home to a thriving and growing AANHPI population, whose achievements in education, science, government, arts, commerce, and civic life continue to elevate and enrich our city. And whereas, the city of Bellevue remains committed to fostering opportunity, equity, and inclusion for all residents, while uplifting the voices, leadership, and contributions of our AANHPI neighbors. Now therefore I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the Bellevue City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Bellevue, and encourage all residents to learn from and celebrate the leadership, resilience, and cultural heritage of the AANHPI community, both past and present.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Su Hong is a visual artist and Bellevue resident. Her community project, Rain Village, was funded by the Bellevue Arts Program, and she recently completed a Diversity Advantage Plan 2035 project with the city of Bellevue. Welcome. Did you want to say anything? Do you know anything about the exhibit at City Hall?
Yes, I have two pieces up there.
Can you tell us about them?
I don't want to make it too long.
It's okay. Go ahead.
So while I was living here, I think I was looking back my heritage. So I went back to Korea and learned traditional color painting and basically learned silk painting. So those are, I'm exhibiting a painting painted on silk, so it actually is transparent because of the wall is blocked, but it's, but it's a multicultural piece because some of the other influences are there. So I'm more towards not fixing one culture. I want other people to learn each other's culture, that that way the community is not identified by inheritance of their fixed identity, it's more understanding each other.
Great.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you for telling us about it. If you'll have a seat and stick around, we'll do a picture when we're all done with the proclamations, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, I think it's me, doing Older Americans Month, and Andrea Klein, do you want to have, come, come sit down?
So whereas President John F. Kennedy designated May as Senior Citizens Month to pay tribute to older adults across the country, and in 1980 President Carter changed the name to Older Americans Month. And whereas each May, Older Americans Month shines a spotlight on the valuable contributions of older adults while reinforcing the importance of community support, connection, and inclusion. And whereas the city of Bellevue honors and values its older adult population, individuals who serve as leaders, caregivers, volunteers, and mentors, helping to build a more vibrant, resilient, and intergenerational community. And whereas the 2025 national theme for Older Americans Month, "Flip the Script on Aging", invites all of us to challenge outdated stereotypes and recognize aging as a time of continued growth, purpose, and possibility. And whereas Bellevue is committed to fostering an age-friendly city that prioritizes accessibility, belonging, and opportunity for people of all ages and abilities. And whereas the city of Bellevue works in partnership with local organizations and community members to provide services, programs, and resources that empower older adults to remain active, connected, and engaged in the city, in the life of the city. Now therefore I, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the entire Bellevue City Council, do hereby proclaim the month, May 2025, as Older Americans Month in Bellevue, and encourage all residents to recognize the resilience, wisdom, and continuing contributions of older adults, and to help flip the script by celebrating aging as a dynamic and valued stage of life. And Andrea, I know you're a member of the Bellevue Network on Aging, and you'll have to introduce yourself.
This is Bernie, and you're going to be hearing about her in my remarks.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Mayor and council members, for this opportunity to celebrate Older Americans Month here in Bellevue. As the mayor said, the theme this year, from the Federal Administration for Community Living, is "Flip the Script on Aging," inviting us to challenge outdated assumptions and embrace a new, more vibrant narrative about growing older. As Jonathan Rausch recently argued in The Atlantic, "America must radically rethink what it means to be old." With more people living into their 80s, 90s, and beyond, the old model of retirement as a time of withdrawal no longer fits. Instead, we see older adults as leaders, innovators, and essential contributors to our community. The theory of gero-transcendence, developed by sociologist Lars Tornstrom, helps us understand this transformation. Gero-transcendence describes aging not as decline, but as a developmental journey toward greater wisdom, perspective, and connection. Older adults often experience a shift from material concerns to a deeper sense of purpose, a broader view of time, and a desire to give back. This is not just a theory, it's a reality we see every day in Bellevue. Nowhere is this clearer than in the volunteer work of our older residents. Across the nation, adults 65 and older account for nearly 29% of all volunteer hours, contributing billions of dollars in economic value. Their efforts bridge generations, foster empathy, and create a lasting impact. Volunteering not only benefits the community, but also brings older adults joy, purpose, and better health. Let me tell you about one wonderful example. Bernie, who is, she is not afraid to tell you, 84 years old, and she lives in Silver Glen, an over-55 nonprofit cooperative in Bellevue. Each year, Bernie makes over 100 beautiful quilts and donates them to our local hospices for the patients. When Sophia's Way opened two shelters for women, Bernie made sure each bed had a beautiful quilt. So, and she does many other things, so thank you very much, Bernie. And there were so many other unsung heroes, taking neighbors to doctor's appointments, mentoring youth, supporting nonprofits in thrift stores and food banks, working in the botanical gardens, and other areas in the city, each one enhancing the quality of life in Bellevue. Let's flip the script on aging by celebrating wisdom, resilience, and generosity of Bellevue's older adults. Let's recognize that growing older means growing richer in experience and capacity to serve. Together, we can build a city where every stage of life is valued and every resident is empowered to contribute. Those looking for meaningful volunteer activities can go to the Bellevue website, belviewwa.gov, and place volunteer in the search box to find many opportunities to assist our wonderful city. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And don't go too far, because we'll do a picture after, okay? Next up, we have our deputy mayor reading the Building Safety Month proclamation, and I'd like to invite Greg Schrader and Kathy Baker to come sit down, sit at the desk here.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Bellevue is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depend on the safety and resilience of the buildings where we live, work, and gather. And Building Safety Month is a time to raise awareness about the critical role of modern building codes and the professionals who develop, enforce, and construct them, helping to ensure that our built environment is safe, sustainable, and disaster resilient. And this year's theme, Game On, encourages all of us to take responsibility for creating safe and resilient spaces by supporting sound construction practices, investing in preparedness and promoting building safety education. And building safety professionals in Bellevue, our code officials, inspectors, architects, engineers, builders, and tradespeople, work diligently to apply modern codes that safeguard the public from natural disasters, structural failures, fire, weather events, and other hazards. And Bellevue's commitment to innovation, sustainability, and excellence in construction aligns with the goals of Building Safety Month, helping to protect lives, reduce risks, and foster vibrant neighborhoods. And this month is an opportunity to recognize the importance of building safety and the individuals who make it their mission to keep our homes, schools, and workplaces strong and secure. Now therefore I, Mo Malakutian, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Building Safety Month in Bellevue, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community partners to join in recognizing the importance of building safety, the application of modern codes, and the ongoing contributions of building safety professionals in creating a safer, more resilient Bellevue.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we have, ah, sorry, Greg Schrader, who's our Building Official in Development Services Department, and Kathy Baker, who's the Assistant Fire Marshal for the Bellevue Fire Department.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, for reading the proclamation. We very much appreciate the recognition of the critical importance of building safety and of the work that all of the professionals throughout the private sector and the public sector do each day to ensure that it happens. That is very much appreciated. I know that the Assistant Fire Marshal would also like to make a few comments, so I'll give her the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members for recognizing the vital role that building safety plays in protecting our community. On behalf of the Bellevue Fire Department and our life safety partners, I'm honored to accept this proclamation and to recognize the teamwork that keeps our buildings and the people within them safe every day.
Great, thank you so much. Let's take a picture together. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is oral communication. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, this evening there are 19 pre-registered speakers on the list. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time for oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to city of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called.
Excuse me, can we have some quiet? Thank you.
The presiding officer in both of those categories is authorized to give preference to those who haven't spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking to topics that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. So each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And then additionally, I'll remind everyone that in compliance with Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities, no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure, or may support or oppose a candidate for election, which includes one's own campaign. Any people beginning to talk on that subject will be asked to stop. So as I said, there were 19 pre-registered speakers. We will hit a maximum number of speakers on middle housing and Maiden Bowery Bay. So we have put them in order, and I'll call our first speaker, who is Paul Clark.
They both work.
They both work?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Just stay back. It's very sensitive. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the middle housing LUCA. As you know, Planning Commission heard substantial feedback from neighborhood leaders across Bellevue. Most of that feedback carried one simple, consistent message. We understand the state's mandating increased density, but that doesn't mean Bellevue should go beyond those mandates. Unfortunately, the proposal before you tonight does just that. I want to echo the concerns raised by those neighborhood leaders. While I do appreciate that Planning Commission wisely rejected some of the more extreme elements that appeared in earlier drafts, the final recommendation is still excessive. One of the primary justifications for this expanded density is Bellevue's 35,000-unit housing growth target. Truth is, we can meet that target within our designated growth corridors, almost. Areas with vastly better transit access, and accordingly vastly better climate outcomes. There is no need to impose additional disproportionate density on our single-family neighborhoods. If anything, further densifying the growth corridors makes more sense. Now, I'm not going to list all of the excesses of this proposal, but I will highlight a few. 1110 requires that we allow up to six units by right within a quarter mile of transit, major transit stops. This LUCA expands that to half a mile. Please don't see that as a doubling. I don't know if any one of you remembers high school geometry. I know it's a fun topic. Pi r squared, our good friend, doubling the radius quadruples the effective area. That's a pretty big increase. There, additionally, the law allows jurisdictions to include attached ADUs in density computations. In this LUCA, they don't count at all. 35, 33 to 50% more density on lots affected by that. This expanded density will strain infrastructure in areas that were never designed for it, on top of a transportation system already under pressure. The Transportation Department's own TFP identifies numerous intersections projected to fail due to growth in coming years, and the city does not yet have a plan or funding associated with that plan to address them. Additional unnecessary traffic on neighborhood streets under these conditions is, I think, irresponsible. Now let me point out, these unnecessary policy changes didn't have to wait for this state mandate. If the city had wanted to implement them, council had the authority to do so at any time in the past years. Leveraging the urgency of state mandates to advance unnecessary density, I think, risks undermining public trust. So in conclusion, I urge you to separate the legal compliance with state mandates from any broader push to increase density and take that up at a later time. Thank you.
Our next speaker on the list is Ed Wang.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Over 10 years ago now, I first moved to Bellevue. I quickly fell in love with the city. I loved the opportunities, the diversity, and the amenities. I wanted to raise my children here in Bellevue. But the city, by putting all its growth in the growth corridors, has built only apartments. There's nothing for people in the next stage of life looking to move into homeownership, looking to settle down and have a family. One by one, my peers, people in their 30s, have all left Bellevue in search of housing they can afford. There is no place in Bellevue for young families anymore, and there is no place more evident than in the school district. Bellevue School District is seeing a precipitous drop in enrollment, which is threatening their funding and the very existence of our beloved schools. The district's demographers anticipate that one in three children will be gone by 2033. We've already seen the closure of East Gate Elementary School and Wilburton Elementary School, and I've heard, I'm sure you've all heard about the proposed closure of Odell Middle School. More closures will be coming. The school district itself says that the lack of affordable housing is a primary driver behind the decline in enrollment. If you don't act boldly on middle housing, we'll lose our schools. So I'm here today to express my strong support for the proposed middle housing LUCA. We can't just do the bare minimum. We need bold action today. The LUCA, developed by the Planning Commission and staff, encourages and incentivizes the development of the middle housing that we desperately need. I'm sure you've heard from people who are concerned about neighborhood character, but I ask you, what neighborhood character do we have without families, without children, without the middle class? The proposed LUCA could bring market-rate, brand-new, family-sized homes to Bellevue for $800,000. If you follow the real estate market, that might be hard to believe, but that is a going rate for a three-bedroom townhouse in North Seattle, where the cost of construction, land, and labor is about the same as in Bellevue. All we are missing in Bellevue is adequate supply. $800,000 homes would be an absolute miracle in Bellevue. That's half the cost of the average single-family home now. Middle housing is the way forward for young families and the middle class. Sometimes we need change to preserve the character that really matters. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Clang.
Ed Wang. Did you get that?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Charlie Clang, and I'm here to talk about the Maiden Bowery Bay Park. I'm representing the Maiden Bowery Bay Neighbors Association. The association supported park development in 2010 and promoted the city council adopted implementation principles that are in the park plan. The staff is here tonight to present the 275-page burger report that was issued in late February. We met with staff in March for clarifications, and then we prepared comments and a report to the city council and staff. That's this document which you all got. We provided key points, we discussed implementation principles, and we had recommended action items. Traffic and parking were addressed by the POP report and Scott Lampy comments, plus Pam Ebbsworth and Dan Bonathen's comments were provided, and you're going to hear from them in a bit. In sum, the association believes that city council action now is premature. Staff has not responded to the association's extensive comments from multiple sources. Importantly, the park board has not seen the burger report. The park board was last updated in January before the burger report was issued. The agenda memo presented to the park board said, quote, "For information and discussion, no board action," end quote. The park board provided no recommendation- The park board provided no recommendations on phasing or anything else, but they did express concerns informally, as reflected in the minutes. Quote, "It is disappointing to see that the funding for Phase Two only gets a parking lot and a walkway," end quote. Quote, "The parking area is a significant distance from the park. The design is not user-friendly," end quote. Thus, at a minimum, we think that the matter should be sent back to staff because the park board needs to review the Burger Report and the phasing decisions. Parking as a concern is noted by the park board comments. The Burger Report for Phase Two eliminates the sixty-nine existing marina parking spaces, which are used by parkgoers and marina tenants. The marina tenants would be expected to trudge up the hill to park in the kite parcel, and the Burger Report reserves seventeen spaces there for marina tenants. But the Burger Report mistakenly based that number, assuming the marina was reduced to thirty-one mortgage slips. We don't, we disagree with that, but that can't happen until Phase Three. Until then, the seventy-eight marina tenants will need forty reserved parking spaces, and that's out of just the fifty spaces total at the kite site. The Burger Report parking study did not even consider overflow parking demand from Main Street, which we know is a big problem. We think a carefully considered plan can create a great waterfront promenade with substantial parking, even if not the full sixty-nine spaces there now. In conclusion, the association asks that the project be returned to staff with direction to obtain a recommendation from the park board and to provide a response to all the public comments before returning to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Bonathen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is David Bonathen, and I'm here to talk about the Maidenbauer Bay Park. As a twelve-year resident of Maidenbauer Bay and owner resident at the View condominium, I take great pride in our neighborhood character, safety, and residential integrity. While I support thoughtful park expansion, aspects of Phase Two design, particularly the Gateway Kite Site parcel, raise alarming concerns. The current plan prioritizes urban infrastructure over the creation of green space, introducing an open-air parking garage, elevated walkway, and future three-story pavilion. The current design proposal in no way resembles a city park and is too much for this one-acre site to handle. It will only lead to neighborhood decline and disruption. These include further traffic congestion on an already over-congested road system, disruption of residents' privacy and quality of life, increased noise, light pollution, and urban camping. Recent incidents of criminal activity and reckless driving underscore the need for increased security, not additional stressors. Instead, I ask the city to consider the following alternatives that would better balance public accessibility with neighborhood harmony. Parking. Move all planned parking to the east parcel behind the Chevron Station, eliminating parking at the Gateway Kite Site, easing congestion and noise while improving safety and privacy. Withdraw current plans, current Phase Two plans for the elevated walkway and future, future multi-story pavilion. Replace with a park design that features open green spaces and picnic areas, likened to the green area at Maidenbauer Bay Park or the new park design at 112th and Main Street. This would significantly lower costs while preserving neighborhood tranquility and bonus. We always, we already have fantastic views of the lake from Maidenbauer Park. Gateway Site consideration. This one-acre site cannot sustain the proposed overbuild infrastructure without long-term negative impacts. Phase Two plans are just too much for this compact area and the neighborhood to absorb. The marina, Bellevue's aboding community, increasing mortgage should be a focal point of park expansion. With 226 people on the current waiting list for mortgage, current plans for a call of reduction of forty-eight slips from the current seventy-nine. One Hundredth Avenue, this is a high-volume, two-way, narrow street that cannot afford road width reductions. Park hours, current park closing time, 11:00 PM, is too late for this compact residential neighborhood. Maidenbauer Bay is an integral part of Bellevue's history and identity. It deserves a park expansion that aligns with its unique historic character. Again, I ask the city to adopt a design that maintains community values, prioritizing green space, safety, and residential logistics. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anthony Havia. Mr. Havia, if you're joining us virtually, could you raise your hand and identify yourself? Okay, I'm going to move on to the next speaker, who is Howard Liu.
Thank you. I'm here to support House Bill 11-10. Three things in the House Bill 11-10. One, affordability. Two, environmental protection per Section 1. Per Section 2, compatibility in scale, similar to a single-family home. Section 3, not require more restrictive requirements than the single-family residences. So that's the big picture. Here I have sort of an example of a site of a double lot that we see here in Bellevue, or it can be triple lot as well, right next to a single-family home that's 5,000 square feet. So here's a section that's looking at it. So currently, if we are to develop it the way it is, we are able to provide a building like right here and provide four units over here. And we can build on top of an existing building three more right there. So for this double lot, we can build two, up to eight units. And so, but the way that the current code is, is reading is that we need to short-plant the lot in order to make them eight units, and that's not affordable, because that's more expensive. And second, that is not environmentally friendly, because we're asking, forcing people to demolish a fine existing Bellevue home and then to build new, that's a lot of embodied energy wasting, as well as putting fine materials into landfill. And that is, that's not meeting what the, what the House, how HB 11-10 is intended. So the ask is that instead of requesting it to build it per lot, I'm asking that if we can go back and revise it so that it's per acre, as what it is in the current building code, so that we meet the sustainability and making it affordable without doing too much. That's very cost-effective. Thank you very much.
Can you follow that up with an email to the council? Can you follow that up with an email to the council, please?
Yes.
Thanks. Oh, good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Ebsworth.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you. My name is Pam Ebsworth, and I'm here to talk about the Maidenbauer Bay Park. I've owned my condo at 10,000 Maidenbauer since 1996 and have lived in the immediate neighborhood most of the time since the early 1970s. I've been involved with MBNA since its inception in 2007, and in recent months have attended two meetings with city staff and the designer team from Burger. The plan presented on both occasions was conceptual. Details, engineering, topography, and budget were not represented. We have not seen story polls to illustrate the height of the structures being proposed. When expressing concerns about lack of clarity in how Phase Two will impact our neighborhood, Burger told us more than once, "Don't worry, you will love it." That is not an adequate response. My building borders Phase Two of the park along Southeast 100th. Our guests, deliveries, and contractors enter our park from this street, and it is also where they park. We are concerned as to how the new plan will affect our parking and access. The implementation principles adopted by the city in 2010 protect this right, but the current plan is unclear. What little parking we currently have is shared with neighboring buildings, as well as the general public. It is essential that emergency response is not compromised. We are concerned about the demolition and construction, i.e. the staging and the effect. Lighting, security, and crime prevention are also concerns. It is too early to proceed to the contract stage that is being requested. Phase Two's insertion into a small space inside a long-established residential neighborhood requires more attention. Maidenbauer Bay and the marina, as they are, is a cherished and historic part of Bellevue, beloved for its charm and character. The proposed bay connector is out of place and out of scale. The optics at the expense may have many of the features in the proposed plan seems questionable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our third and final speaker in opposition of the Maidenbauer Bay item, so we cannot take any more speakers on that topic. Our next speaker is Brett Parmesak.
Good evening, council members. I represent the neighbors of the Rockwood-Lancaster neighborhood, and that's the neighborhood that is on Northeast State, 140th, 148th, and Belred. It's right in the middle. And as such, we're already surrounded by multi-use. We have lots of condos, lots of townhouses, commercial, and businesses all the way around the entire place. I'm going to use our neighborhood as an example, but it only has two ways in. So if you start building these six units on one single-family lot, it's going to get a little bit more crowded, there's going to be more parking on the street, and we'll lose some of the aspects of our neighborhood. Now, our neighborhood is not against density. We have no problem with ADUs and the like in the neighborhood to meet some of that. But we do believe that the Wilburton, the Spring, and the Belred areas already are set to be about 30,000 by the year 2040. They're, they're better equipped to actually build out, to build the roads, the parks that they want, that are being idealized in the documents for each one of those. And so what we're looking for is not to ruin the neighborhoods that we have. One of the things that was in the comprehensive plan is that the diversity of Bellevue's neighborhoods is a city treasure. So we want to keep that, we want to make sure that's there. I understand the individual that came before and wants, you know, a lot more density so that the prices come down. But affordability is, I don't know if it's going to, if it's going to happen the way we all think it will. This is a great place to live, people love living here, people want to move here, and that's only going to raise the prices as we move forward. And since this is over twenty years, and not just in the next year or two or three, the 800,000 mark, I don't think, is, is realistic. So I want to keep that in. But we also want to make sure that if, for some reason, we're, we get a six unit on a, that we keep some of the things that make a neighborhood a neighborhood. We want to keep the sidewalks, we'd like 20-foot setbacks. We don't want to lose the ability to walk around. We'd like to have parking on-site, so that that way, it's not too much. I live, and I know a lot of my neighbors are here, supporting this. They want to make sure that they can still walk with their families, they want to. It's just the right thing to do. Lastly, we, I would just want to bring up one other neighborhood, the Chevy Chase neighborhood, which is off of 148th. It has one entry, in and out, and it can only take a right, basically, onto 148th, which is going to add a lot more traffic. So we want you guys to think about infrastructure when you're making the decisions on neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Mandel.
Hello, my name is Ryan Mandel. I'm a resident of downtown Bellevue and have been in Bellevue for the better part of a decade. I have grown to love this city and all it has to offer. But there is a glaring problem the city faces that needs to be addressed, the housing shortage. The shortage affects the city and the people who live and work here in several ways, but the main way is the price. The city has so much potential, but it's too expensive to realize that potential. I cannot count how many times I have talked with people working in the city who have expressed some version of, "I'd love to live here, but I can't justify the expense." Or, "There is no housing here." This is a common conversation that I've had with people at T-Mobile, Microsoft, Meta, et cetera, when I mentioned that I'm living in Bellevue. And so because of this shortage, we see so many of the people who work here cannot afford to live here. This is a terrible missed opportunity and is part of what I meant when I talked about unrealized potential. When people are not able to live near where they work, they are saddled with lengthy commutes. This wastes their time, strains our infrastructure, and adds to the carbon emissions that we say we are trying to cut. Adding to dense development not only helps people live here, but live here well. More density means more opportunity to meet people, more reason to invest and use our public transit, and more families. So I speak in support of the proposed LUCA. I believe that the proposed LUCA is what we need to keep Bellevue a thriving city and not slowly degrade into a childless ghost town, home only to the people who are lucky to get here first. Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe that is our third person in support of middle housing, so we cannot take any more speakers in support of middle housing. Our next speaker is Shan Gao. Mr. Gao, if you're joining us online, could you raise your hand and identify yourself? Okay, I will move on to our next speaker, which is Pamela Johnston.
Hello, Pamela Johnston. I don't have a good voice, ma'am, but I'll try my best. I'm here to speak today for, first of all, the fifty-some people that were at the Bristol Trails Meeting that said, "We don't understand this." This is a very complex, complex, middle housing and ADU and other things mixed in code. There's so many pieces of it. So I ask you today to keep it simple. That means do the minimal, and then have a Phase Two, where you have time to really look at things and see what works and what doesn't work for Bellevue. One of the things is, is that Bellevue generally has higher tax rates. That's because we have better streets. And these are things that we have to buy, buy things for. Some middle housing in Seattle is going for $5 million for a lot. They're selling lots in Redmond for $2 million. And that's just a lot that's not the house, or any piece of the house. I don't think that we are focused on the right thing. We have all these big areas that we're trying to focus on getting density, and we haven't done it. So we need to keep it simple. Make it so that everyone can understand what it's talking about. If I can go out to the biggest house in Bellevue and say, "Okay, I get that lot size, I get that house size." I understand what it's going to be like when we have that as a middle housing. When people say three stories, they go like, "Oh, my gosh, three stories is pretty tall. Four stories is pretty tall." We're going from 30 feet to 38 feet, and they're saying, "Well, it's only 35." But it's 35, my house is 35. So if you've been at my house before, you know that it's pretty tall for 35. And if it was next door to you on a, on a .5 acre, you would be feeling like it's really tall and imposing on you. So there's things that we can do, and I've sent you this document. All of the things that do on here are basically from the state code. So I hope that you could look through this document as you're going through today, and just saying, "Hey, let's meet the state code." And then we can talk in the next phase about how to go beyond that, and we can have an understanding from all the people, what we're doing now. Because people just don't understand, and it's too complex. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our third and final speaker, sharing concerns or opposition to the middle housing. Thank you. That was our third and final speaker sharing concerns or opposition to the middle housing items. We've reached the max on both sides on middle housing. Our next speaker is Jaskeran Sural. I don't believe I see. Mr. Sural, if you're online, if you could raise your hand and identify yourself. Okay, I'm going to move on to our next speaker, who's Karen Morris.
Karen Morris, my address is on file. I haven't been here for a while. If you wonder why I don't attend outreach meetings or do surveys anymore, it is because in my considerable experience, they increasingly have less meaningful impact on the issues your citizens raise unless that input is in line with already determined plans and outcomes. Conducting staff sometimes show bias, often don't answer pertinent questions substantively or do any follow-through. An example is an issue I raised about the impact of, I raised repeatedly about the impact of projects greatly raising property tax assessments and thus taxes because of state law on this issue. None of the numerous city staff and officials I raised this issue with have followed through or gotten back to me. The county assessor's office, however, said my interpretation was correct. Property tax issues tie two of tonight's agenda items together. You proclaim your recognition of the contributions of older Americans and tout their contributions and right to remain active, connected, and engaged. Meanwhile, the rising property tax assessments and taxes move towards decimating their fixed incomes and forcing them out of their homes. The middle house changes are going to make this worse based on state property tax assessment law. They can and will be taxed on what is allowed, not what they wish to do or what they do. I can provide citations, further info, and documentation on this. So I feel the council should do the minimum required by state law and no more until they take the time to analyze these impacts before moving forward. There seem to be certain assumptions that this will provide housing affordability, which evidence does not support. Also, that density is only positive and that everyone should desire it. But I recall an experiment we replicated in college biology using mice where we created spaces and gradually increased density in those spaces observing for impacts. What we found was what the original study had found, that increased density beyond a certain point increases aggression and decreases positive behaviors. The more dense the population, the worse it got. I see parallels in today's world. Let's take the time to analyze these unintended or not just, or just not prioritized consequences and others we may not have considered and try to come up with better solutions. Thank you.
We have reached the 30-minute time limit for oral communication. So at this point, I would encourage everyone else who is unable to speak tonight to email the council at council@bellevuewa.gov. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have three study session items tonight. Can we move with the first one without taking a break? Are you okay with that? All right, we'll take a break after the first one. And so City Manager, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The first study session tonight is a review of the Planning Commission's recommended Land Use Code Amendment and the proposed Bellevue City Code Amendment in response to the passage of House Bills 1110 and 1337, which do require cities to expand housing options and densities in residential areas. I want to acknowledge the really valuable input from residents and stakeholders that's been brought throughout this process and continues, and then also the extensive and diligent work of the Planning Commission and Development Services staff. Also want to recognize the challenge of balancing the requirements of the state law, the housing needs and the vision, and the wide stakeholder interests that you are receiving. So there's a lot to take in tonight. This is an information presentation for council, and staff is here to as well log in your feedback and answer questions and take questions. The intent is to have additional study session in the coming month with council and to work towards the final direction from the council and action by the end of June. So we have from Development Services, our Department Director Rebecca Horner, our Code and Policy Director Nick Whipple, Senior Planner and Code and Policy, with Code and Policy Kirsten Mant, and they are joined by the Planning Commission Chair Gepel. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Members of the Council, Rebecca Horner with Development Services. Tonight, we are very excited to have another conversation with the council on the middle housing amendments because we recognize this is a very complicated, complex code amendment. We want to provide additional time for council to provide input before we finalize and bring back to you for another study session. So we're looking forward to getting your feedback tonight. Our agenda this evening is to review the history, the project history, in addition to reviewing the engagement process up to this point, to review the current draft Land Use Code Amendment. Chair Gepel is with us, who will share the Planning Commission feedback and recommendation. And then we also have a proposed Bellevue City Code Amendment. We'll review that, and we will ask you for your feedback and give you the next steps. So with that, we'll share the project background.
Great, thank you. Have a good night, Michelle. So, good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, members of the council. We are here tonight, as Rebecca noted, to talk about middle housing. Wanted to provide a bit of background on the project. So this really, the work began on the project when council initiated the comprehensive plan update in February of 2022. The council also was looking at some next right work items in July of 2022, shortly after you all initiated the comp plan update. Next right work, you reviewed 16 items, and you had selected six that you wanted to prioritize in kind of a two-year, two-to-three-year period. This is one of those items that you all selected in July to prioritize as well. And then council initiated work formally on the middle housing and ADU code updates in January of 2023 as part of that next right work. So you selected it in July and then initiated it formally in January of 2023. All of this ahead of the state mandating these changes to be made. So House Bill 1110 and 1337, those were passed in July of 2023, and they have to be, the updates to comply with that law have to be adopted by you all by June 30th of 2025, so next month. So we really began engaging with the Planning Commission on the specifics of the Lucca Land Use Code Amendment in October of 2024, after council adopted the comprehensive plan update. A lot of the work that went into this really related back to what council adopted as part of that periodic update. In terms of outreach, this project did utilize some of the outreach that was completed as part of the comprehensive plan update, which was quite thorough. So Bellevue, the city had undertaken a multi-year proactive effort to involve the community in shaping middle housing policies. And we do recognize no outreach effort is going to reach every resident. The city did use a comprehensive approach to try and get a good sample of residents. So that approach included using surveys, both in the Phase 1 outreach, which is, we'll call the comprehensive plan update outreach, as well as the more detailed Lucca outreach phase. We also held public meetings as part of the comp plan update. There were strategy teams that were developed all to gather input. The phases of the comp plan update outreach is included here for reference. There were four phases. As part of Phase 4, there was a middle housing survey that was sent out and had 567 respondents, 90% of those respondents lived in Bellevue. And then recognizing, of course, that the importance of some of the implementation details, we began re-engaging with the community and launched three additional engagement phases in late 2024 that focused primarily on the Lucca and informing people the specifics of both the House bills in question tonight. For the comprehensive plan engagements, so the citywide questionnaire that was provided in 2022, there were 567 participants. 90% of the participants were Bellevue residents, and 92% expressed interest in at least one type of middle housing in at least one area of the city. And in 2023, Arch and East King County Partner Cities did a questionnaire. This focused on people who aren't typically heard in our traditional outreach processes. We had 651 participants, 35% of those participants were Bellevue residents, and many of them were quite supportive and interested in having more middle housing in Bellevue. And 61% of Bellevue residents supported middle housing options. We wanted to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan and infrastructure planning as well. So as you all know, since you just went through this exercise, a comprehensive plan is, of course, our long-term roadmap, so it does a 20-year planning horizon. That guides how Bellevue is going to grow. It tells us kind of where we're going to be planning for new housing, jobs, parks, services. And then, of course, this is required under the Growth Management Act that we not only have a comprehensive plan, but then we update it periodically. So for Bellevue, we are on a 10-year update cycle. When we update the plan, we do need to include growth targets, so how many new homes and jobs that we expect to add. And of course, when we're thinking about addressing how to serve our growth with roads, sewers, schools, water, that's where infrastructure planning starts to come into play. So when our growth targets go up, we also must show how we will support that growth with infrastructure. So that's when we began to update concurrently our transportation element, our utilities element, our capital facilities elements. So those were all updated as part of the periodic process based on the established growth targets. So these elements will lay out a general framework for how we should be updating our systems and expanding our systems. And after the comprehensive plan is adopted, then cities start to go into more detailed updates to functional plans. You'll see those kind of referenced, you've got the comp plan elements that lead into functional plans that start to address the growth that we are planning for. And then we wanted to also call out the environmental review process that was associated with the comp plan periodic update. So we did look at a pretty large amount of growth. This is capacity that we, that the city analyzed. So this is theoretical zoning capacity. This isn't what we're planning for within the planning horizon, but it is something that we wanted to analyze. So we did study the capacity for 152,000 new housing units and 185,000 jobs. So that was all part of the environmental review process. We also wanted to provide some clarity around a few documents that relate to this code amendment. So of course, we have state law, so this is the House bills that amended the Growth Management Act that are requiring cities to update codes to apply or to allow for middle housing. So within the state law, it will establish the baseline density requirements. It will provide, it does provide some details around parking as well as ADU height and FAR or floor area ratio minimums. It does also give some flexibility on the middle housing types, which Kirsten will cover in a bit, and then gives some flexibility to jurisdictions on whether or not you want to count accessory dwelling units towards that unit density that's provided in state law. And then to help municipalities with implementing this baseline density requirement, the state directed the Department of Commerce to create a model ordinance. The model ordinance is ideally something that you could take off the shelf and apply in your community, really intended for different municipalities that maybe don't have the resources to do a lot of the planning and make things so that they are actually tailored specifically to the jurisdiction. We have a pretty big staff, we have a great commission and council, so we felt that it was important for us to be able to use the model ordinance as a reference but develop regulations that really work for Bellevue and that aren't provided directly by the state necessarily. We do want to note, this is important, though, because the model ordinance would take effect if no local ordinance is adopted by the city. So those would be the rules that govern design and dimensional details for middle housing. And those would include any kind of FAR or floor area ratio requirements, height, setbacks, lot coverage, that sort of thing. The model ordinance was also developed on lot sizes that are vastly different than what we see here in Bellevue. So the lot sizes are based on between 4 and 7,500 square feet, whereas in Bellevue, our typical lot sizes are around 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. So you'll see the dimensional differences are pretty drastic because of the assumption of a smaller lot size. And then the last document here is the Land Use Code Amendment, which is before you tonight. These are Bellevue-specific regulations that are tailored to implement state law and align with our recently updated comp plan, which has a lot of policy support on where we want to see more housing options and choices, namely near transit, near places where we have jobs, services, shopping, those types of amenities. So you'll see in the recommendation, that's where a lot of that extra growth or where we're proposing to go beyond the mandate is provided. And it also addresses the Bellevue lot size context as well as housing need. So with that, Kirsten's going to launch into the specifics.
Great, thank you, Nick. So in terms of looking at the overall recommendation that's in the current recommended Lucca, I was going to do just an overview of everything together and then kind of go through each section piece by piece as it compares to the baseline requirements of House Bills 1110 and 1337. So when it comes to the baseline requirement for any lot within the city that is zoned for residential use, that is four units per lot citywide. That is what's reflected in the recommended Lucca as well as what is in House Bill 1110. Where House Bill 1110 requires that we go, we permit up to six dwelling units per lot is when two of those units are affordable or when those lots are within a quarter-mile walking distance of a major transit stop. The bill defines a major transit stop for the purposes of the Bellevue context as any of our light rail stations and any of our rapid-ride stations, which right now that is the B-line. In the recommended Lucca, we do have the six dwelling units per lot when two are affordable. We were asked as staff to look at a potential fee-in-lieu option and review that with the Planning Commission and ultimately arrived at a recommendation for a fee-in-lieu of providing those two affordable units. The intent here is that our understanding of that affordability incentive is quite a lot of units in order to get to that extra density and hoping to capture some fees through that potential process. The other expansion from the state law mandate related to a major transit stop is to provide up to six units by right within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop rather than the quarter-mile. And again, as Nick mentioned, that is looking to leverage our transit resources in the city. The other area geographically that we're looking in the recommendation to go to six dwelling units per lot by right is when, within a quarter-mile of centers. By centers, that is our Regional Growth Center downtown, and then we have four candidate county-wide growth centers within the city as well. Regarding state law for HB 1337, it requires that we allow up to two ADUs on any lot that is zoned to permit single-family use. The bill also leaves it up to jurisdiction to decide whether or not they want those to count towards their overall total allowance. The recommended Lucca permits attached ADUs to not count towards that total. That is consistent with how we treat attached ADUs today in the code. But that detached ADUs would count towards your overall total. The other element in terms of density that is in the recommended Lucca relates to cottage housing. Cottage housing has a number of restrictions on it that sort of naturally limits the density, one of those being the fact that we limit the size of those cottages. We also require a certain amount of open space for cottage-style development, circulatory elements, landscaping, things like that. We felt that, you know, per some of the engagement we read through the comp plan, cottage housing was one of the types that folks seemed to really be excited about and wanted to look for ways to craft the Land Use Code Amendment to encourage this housing type. So because of that, the current recommended Lucca is recommending that cottage density be driven by the maximum floor area ratio permitted on a site along with all of those other site restrictions and the size of the cottages themselves. To give a sense for where some of these geographies lie, we put together a map. For the most part, a lot of these buffers are based on a radius or an as-the-crow-flies. We did spend some time going in kind of area by area to see where are some areas we know there's going to be barriers to access. there's going to be barriers to access because we know the requirement really is that walking distance. We want to make sure that the parcels that are gaining these extra units really are walkable to these areas. So you'll notice areas, for example, down by Factoria, we know 405 is a natural barrier to being able to get to that center, so that was an area we knew would be easy to eliminate from buffer. We do want to make sure that this is an illustrative map, it's not regulatory. It's just to give a sense for where these areas are. When someone would come in for an application, they would need to show at time of application how they meet that walking distance criteria. We also know that there are some neighborhoods with restrictive covenants that will also kind of naturally limit the ability for them to develop. These are private agreements between neighbors in a community that do supersede the code until such time as maybe those communities would decide not to have those, but those would be another thing that might limit where some of these extra units could go. And then I will pass this back to Nick just to speak a little bit around House Bill 1998, which is the co-living housing bill.
Great, yeah, we just wanted to make sure that council is aware of another bill that does have some relationship to tonight's discussion. So the legislature also passed House Bill 1998, which is the co-living bill. So these are, you could think of them as more congregate style housing arrangements. So it's residential development that has individual rooms that can be rented out separately, and those are sleeping units, but they could have shared common space, kitchens, that sort of thing. So House Bill 1998 does require that cities allow these by right in all areas that we are allowing six units by right. So relating back to Kirsten's earlier slide, it's everywhere that we would want to go, of course, beyond the baseline, but if we don't go beyond the baseline in any other places other than what's required, that would be a quarter mile from our light rail and rapid transit ride stations. And this is something that we'll be having you all process going forward. There's some pretty tight restrictions and very limited flexibility on how we can choose to implement this bill. So that would be something that we'll, we'll bring forward once the decision is made around where six by right should be allowed.
Just wanted to give a sense of some of the, the key components of the bill that we'll be discussing tonight. So we'll be going through the types of middle housing. I'll be going through the unit density recommendations sort of piece by piece to make sure that overall discussion I had is really clear to understand in each of its components. We'll be discussing floor area ratio, some of the development regulation flexibilities in the recommended Luca, parking, building height, cottage and courtyard housing, site development regulations, and ADUs. One of the components of House Bill 1110 is it outlines nine types of middle housing and requires that cities allow at least six of those nine types. We began discussions with the Planning Commission on this topic back in October. We're lucky enough to have folks with architectural backgrounds on the planning staff to kind of discuss and kind of what, what do these terms mean and how can we make sense of them? The tricky part about picking six of the nine is that there's, there's a lot of overlap unless you're really clear about defining what you mean by a sixplex, for example. The first five of these middle housing types is really speaking to the number of units in a structure rather than a structured typology. For example, a sixplex could be a series of six townhouses, it could be a courtyard-style development, or it could be stacked flats. So one of the points of discussion we had with Planning Commission was, well, there seems to be a lot of overlaps between these different types and names. It might make some sense to just provide some flexibility around what kinds of types we permit, given that there is overlap between these terminologies, and to just permit all of the types subject to the underlying density requirements, dimensional standards, and other requirements applicable to a site. So in the recommendation, we are permitting all the types, again, subject to all of those standards. And this is consistent with the model ordinance that Nick mentioned earlier as well. In terms of the overall recommended unit density, we'll speak first about just the citywide component. And again, this is applicable to any parcel in the city that is zoned for residential use. So consistent with HB 1110, the recommendation allows up to four units per lot on any residentially zoned lot. In the recommendation, we are not counting attached ADUs towards those four. However, we are counting detached ADUs towards those four. And again, in the state law for HB 1337, that is the choice that local jurisdictions have to make. The recommendation also permits up to six units per lot when two are affordable, which is consistent with HB 1110. However, we also have a fee in lieu option. In lieu of providing two affordable units, you can pay a fee per each additional unit in order to build those. And again, as mentioned, cottage housing density is driven by maximum FAR, the maximum cottage size, open space, and all of those other site design and circulatory components. For the major transit stops, this is again a map really showing the radius. So we know, again, there's going to be some areas where there's barriers or that you will not necessarily meet that walking distance standard, but just to give a sense of when we're looking at a half-mile of a major transit stop, these are the areas that we're looking at. So in red, those red dots, those are our light rail stations, and then the yellow dots are the beeline rapid ride stations. State law requires that we permit six units per lot within a quarter-mile distance of a major transit stop, and the recommendation bumps that out to a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, which is also consistent with the required parking exemption in HB 1110, which requires that we exempt parking requirements within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop. And that is also consistent with the recommendation from the model ordinance. When it comes to centers, these are the centers that we're focusing on. Again, it's our Regional Growth Center downtown and our four candidate countywide growth centers. This is a new, new area for King County. These countywide growth centers are new. The goal for them is to really target areas for housing, employment growth, jobs. And so part of the reason that we included a recommendation to include a greater density within a walking distance of these centers is to just better support those and the purpose that they serve. So again, in the recommendation, we're recommending six units per lot within a quarter-mile walking distance of these regional growth center, of the regional growth center and our four candidate countywide growth centers. When it comes to accessory dwelling units, state law requires that we permit two accessory dwelling units on all lot zone to allow single-family homes, and that is consistent with what we have in the recommendation. In terms of density, the state law allows us to decide whether or not those count. Again, in the recommended Luca, we have that attached ADUs do not count, which again is in the current code, and that detached ADUs would count towards that density as well as towards the overall floor area ratio, which I'll get into a little bit later. And in the model code, they do encourage jurisdictions to not count either, so we took a look at that as part of this review. So the fee in lieu options we mentioned earlier, we wanted to give the range of options that we also provided to Planning Commission as, you know, a review of policy choice. At the low end, this is going to maximize participant, participation from developer, developers to provide units, although the revenue per unit is lower. At the high end, this may be an appropriate fee to buy down a unit in certain situations, but we foresee that fewer developers are likely to opt in at this rate, but again, keeping that as a policy choice to keep that high. And then we also provided a, a medium level as well. The recommendation does include the high level of that, but wanted to also give you all the range of options for discussion and review. A floor area ratio, this can be a bit of a tricky and wonky subject to talk about, but it's still important. Floor area ratio basically determines, based on the size of a parcel, how much square footage of a house that you can build. So for example, if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot and the allowable floor area ratio is a .5, that means you can build up to 5,000 square feet of a house, essentially. In the recommendation, we have a chart for FAR that's based on both the lot size and the number of proposed units. This is really driven by the fact that Bellevue does have quite a wide diversity of parcel sizes. And as Nick mentioned, our average parcel size being about 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. The model ordinance is based on those much smaller lot sizes, and we wanted to make sure that the FAR is in our recommended Luca really reflected the conditions in Bellevue. We got further feedback that because we still do have some of those smaller lot sizes, we need to account for those as well. So this is why in our recommendation, we have both what is your lot size, how many units are you proposing, and based off of that, what size of structures in total are you allowed to build? It was also driven by a lot of feedback around providing for family-sized units, so that really drove the square footages in the FAR recommendation. Because detached ADUs count towards your total density, they will also count towards the FAR. However, again, because attached ADUs are not included in total density, they would also be exempt from the FAR. We also provided an exemption for garage area up to 300 square feet. That was driven by the fact that we know a lot of folks really want a garage area for parking. I wanted to make sure that that was able to be provided. We also included a revision to the FAR for when one unit is developed on one parcel, also in a single family. This is really driven by a lot of the robust engagement with the community through the comprehensive plan that had a lot of concerns still around very large single-family homes that aren't providing housing for more people. And so when working through that, there is an FAR exemption currently in the code that once you employ those tools, you can essentially build as big of a house as you want. And so in lieu of that, we're proposing a tapered-off approach for lots over 10,000 square feet. When it comes to parking, both HB 1110 and HB 1337 establish the same parking minimums, which is a space per unit for lots that are less than or equal to 6,000 square feet or two spaces per unit for lots that are greater than 6,000 square feet. Both of those bills also require that we exempt parking within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop. The recommendation includes one space per unit for simplification and also to reflect the greater density of some of these projects. And it also includes the same exemption as required by the bill. The current code also exempts ADUs from parking requirements when they are less than 1,000 square feet, and we have continued that through with the current recommendation. For ADUs, as comparing the recommended Luca to the state law HB 1337, we are also requiring that we allow two units per lot on any lot that is zoned for single-family. The recommended Luca has a maximum lot size for an ADU of 1,200 square feet plus that 300-square-foot exemption for garage area. The law limits us from reducing ADU maximum size below 1,000 square feet. The law also limits us from requiring that ADUs be shorter than 24 feet, which is also what is in the recommendation. We also included a greater allowance for ADUs that are going to be built over accessory structures. A lot of that is based on a lot of feedback from the community, folks who want to build an ADU for grandma or for their kids to live in that already have a detached garage and might want to build something on top of what they already have. And then again, that same parking exemption that I mentioned earlier. There's a number of other key recommenda, key recommendation elements in here. Many of these are not reflected as comparisons to the state law because there are no state law components. There are model ordinance comparisons. We did have provided some information on that in some of the materials with the packet this evening. One of those being setbacks. We generally included a 10-foot reduction for front and rear setbacks and a reduction to five feet minimum for each side. This is based on reviewing some of the components of the model ordinance. The model ordinance generally has some larger reductions as compared to some of our reductions, given some of our larger lot, lower-density zones have quite large setbacks, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't just blanketly applying the same reduction to all of our zones, reflecting the diversity of the setbacks we already have. We also included a recommendation in the building height to go to 38 feet. The current requirement is 30 feet or 35 with a pitched roof. For the most part, in speaking with our land use division, most folks go for the 35 feet. We heard feedback that even just a few extra feet, given the diversity of structure typologies in middle housing, would help with some of that infill feasibility. And really overall, the direction we've received in terms of preparing this Luca is looking for ways to provide that infill feasibility. So some of those setback reductions and some of those building height allowances really can help with that. Another one of those is a small increase to lot coverage, impervious and hard surface coverage, so we included a 5% increase. And this is a 5% increase across what is currently in the code, and again, that really varies depending on the zone. And then for cottage development, again, given that it has more site considerations, is a bit more spread out, so inherently is going to take up more coverage, we allowed for an additional 5%. And then again, hearing feedback around cottages and cottage typologies, really wanting some of those nice things like covered porches, including an additional exemption up to 25% just for covered porch areas. We also had received feedback from Planning Commission to take a look back at the tree code and make sure that are there things are missing, are there some cleanup items, are there some ways to kind of help with that infill feasibility for middle housing? So we worked with our land use staff and internally and speaking with some of the development community around a lot of these items. Cleanup items are things like looking at, do we have the definition for development activity down pat? There were questions around how do we deal with trees on property lines? There's also a few examples that came up where when you get down the line with the tree code right now, there's a place where you get to, we have to replant trees. And we had a few projects coming in where the arborist was saying, hey, we have all these trees we need to replant. If you make us replant all these, some of them might die, and that's not a great outcome. So looking at ways to provide some more flexibility and rely on the experts in the field for that. When it comes to reduced credits, the feedback we really got was again, just around cottage development, again, just because it's very spread out. And we felt that, well, they require open space, it requires landscaping, that might be an area where we know they're going to have to do some retention and landscaping. Are there some ways to make that infill a little bit more feasible? And so we are proposing in the recommendation, reduced credits for cottage development that they can utilize the commercial standard. Some other key elements, I mentioned already a little bit about cottage and courtyard sites. Open space requirements for cottages is 20% set aside, and then a component of that also has to be usable common open space. That requires landscaping and has some impervious surface maximums. There is some minimum dimensions and building orientation to that open space to make sure that those cottages really are utilizing that space. And then we ultimately ended with a maximum cottage size of 1750 square feet, and again, with a 300-square-foot exemption for garages. We started at a much smaller size and slowly kind of went up based on feedback around feasibility for family-sized units, making sure it reflected the needs of the community. We currently already have a provision in the code for what's called a unit lot subdivision. Today, that is really applicable to things like townhome-style developments where a traditional subdivision wouldn't be able to occur because of minimum lot size requirements. And it really just provides another avenue for ownership. HB 1110 does require that we permit unit lot subdivisions for middle housing, so this was a simple expansion of a provision we already have just to provide another one of those ownership avenues. Importantly, it has restrictions on it that a traditional subdivision does not have, and those are on the face of the platmat itself. The primary lot that gets subdivided is known as a parent lot, and the resulting lots are unit lots. Those lots do not qualify for further subdivision, and they would not themselves separately qualify for middle housing density. So essentially, you propose a project, and then you propose where you want to put down lot lines between different units on that project. Another topic of discussion that came up as a part of this project was the transition overlay. HB 1110 requires that we not treat middle housing differently than we do single-family housing, and there's a lot of components of that transition overlay that made implementing that part of the bill quite tricky. As a result of that, we felt it would be appropriate to remove the overlay itself but embed many of those transition requirements where we can in the citywide code. So in the recommended Luca, you'll see that we embedded the landscaping requirements between multifamily uses abutting single-family into our citywide landscaping requirements. You'll see we've also adjusted the land use district names to align both with the future land use map designations, but also the realities of what the existing densities are going to be as a part of middle housing. Our current names such as R1, R1.8 are based on a dwelling units per acre. We know because of the requirements of 1110, those are now units per lot. So we didn't want it to be confusing to retain land use names that didn't reflect the reality of what those districts do. We also felt it made some sense, especially since we have a brand-new comp plan and a new future land use map, to really align the zoning with what we have in the comp plan to make that connection clear. And with that, I'm going to pass things over to Chair Geppel.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to bring to you this evening the Planning Commission's recommendation on the middle housing Luca. You know, the starting point of most of this is requirements under state law mandates, namely House Bill 1110 and House Bill 1337. I have to say that I'm personally a little skeptical about state mandates and don't like the one-size-fits-all approach of those kinds of mandates. I like to think of governments like the city of Bellevue as kind of the laboratories for democracy and... for democracy, and I think they are, in a lot of cases, the best suited to make a lot of the decisions for what's good for the city and the community. That said, I think we at the Planning Commission, with the help of the Bellevue City staff and a lot of input from the public, have made some balanced and modest improvements to what the state mandates require in this instance. The Planning Commission began our discussion around middle housing as part of the comprehensive plan periodic update, which began in 2022. We held three study sessions on the Land Use Code Amendment in October, in February, and in March. And the focus of these discussions included providing information on the baseline requirements of House Bill 1110 and House Bill 1337, potential areas where the city could consider going beyond those baseline requirements, and what some of those options might be. At the third study session, the Planning Commission directed staff to schedule a public hearing for April 9th. And at that public hearing, the Planning Commission heard a huge number of public comments representing a variety of viewpoints on various aspects of the Luca. The written comments received by the Commission were also voluminous. Many commentators expressed concerns about the potential impacts of increased housing density on traffic, infrastructure, parking, the environment, and neighborhood character. Many of these commentators urged the Commission not to go beyond the baseline requirements of House Bill 1110 and 1337. There were also concerns regarding private covenants and their enforceability that were raised by some commentators. Other commenters spoke in support of the proposed Luca, including going beyond the state mandates, including very personal stories regarding their inability of either themselves or their friends to remain in or live in Bellevue. The Planning Commission closed the public hearing after the conclusion of more than two hours of public testimony, and we asked staff then to come back for discussion and a possible recommendation at the next meeting. On April 23rd, a final study session was held, which resulted in the Commission's recommendation that I'm presenting this evening. At this meeting, the public comment period included a majority of individuals speaking in support of the proposed Luca and to support going beyond some of the baseline requirements of the state mandate, echoing some of the same opinions and stories as we heard at the public hearing regarding housing affordability and availability. There were also many comments as well at that study session, reiterating concerns around, you know, increased density and the impacts that it would have on neighborhoods. You know, for me, one of the most striking things was the generational divide between the speakers. Almost all of the speakers who urged the Commission to go beyond the mandate were younger, I'd say probably under 40. And almost all that cautioned against more change were over 40. And personally, that was something that was a little bit of a revelation for me, because when I think about the benefits that, you know, that I and my family have had in living in the City of Bellevue, having access to the great schools, facilities, and other parks and opportunities we have here, you know, it struck me that we have some responsibility to, you know, help other people have the same good opportunities that we have in this City of Bellevue where that is feasible to do, especially if we want to be a future-focused city. The Planning Commission reviewed several policy options, evaluating where it would be appropriate to maintain the baseline requirements of the state legislation, and where exceeding those standards would better support our city's housing goals. The Commission recommended going beyond the state minimums in the following areas, which were already summarized. In particular, allowing up to six units within a half-mile of a light rail or rapid ride stop instead of the required one-quarter mile. Allowing up to six units within a quarter-mile of designated growth areas, including downtown, East Gate, Crossroads, Factoria, Wilburton, and Belred. Exempting attached ADUs from counting toward the unit cap per lot, and providing a fee-in-lie option for projects that do not include two affordable units, given that the state's six-unit allowance incentive tied to affordability was not considered sufficient to drive production of affordable units. So those were some of the areas where we went beyond the state mandate. But there were also many things that the Commission opted not to add, including expanding areas where six units are allowed as a matter of right around other transit stops, or considering going as high as nine units in some areas, which was something that the development community advocated for. These proposals, in our view, were a bridge too far, and the Commission could not square these with legitimate density and infrastructure concerns raised by many of the residents. I think the resulting recommendation is a balanced and fair approach for both the current and future residents here in the City of Bellevue. Additionally, the Commission supported allowing cottage housing developments to exceed the typical unit cap per lot, as these developments would be regulated through the floor area ratios or FARs and maximum unit size rather than strict unit counts. The Planning Commission completed its review and recommendation at the April 23rd study session that resulted in the signed resolution that's included in the packet as Attachment A. And would welcome any questions that the council may have for me or others here. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
One of the last components to discuss tonight are some city code changes, proposed changes. These are primarily cleanup items, items to align with the state law. One of those components is that we, again, as mentioned earlier, we cannot treat middle housing differently than we do single-family. Our current transportation code exempts single-family from providing frontage improvements when building a new unit. We had discussions with transportation, they had their own policy discussions on this. We felt it was important moving forward because we do have many gaps in our frontages within the city to remove that exemption and treat single-family and middle housing the same in terms of requiring frontage improvements. We've been also discussing with them access considerations. Right now, we either have a pretty small, narrow access to be able to access one to two units, and that jumps up pretty great after that into a much wider access requirement for commercial. So looking at ways to reduce the number of access points for middle housing with somewhere in the middle, so we've been continuing to work with transportation on that topic. There's also a few clearing and grading cleanup items we've been working with the building clearing and grading team on. Many of those are cleanup items to align the land use code proposed change cleanup items for the tree code with the tree code elements we have in the city code. There's also currently quite a large buffer setback from critical area buffers within which you can't do grading activities. It's 200 feet, which has been really, really difficult for the development community to deal with when they're doing grading activities. So this has been a longstanding cleanup item from our clear and grade team to work on as well. And there's a few other cleanup items in there as well, but it's a much smaller package for you to review. The next slide is just discussing schedule. As we mentioned earlier, we do, are fast approaching that June 30th adoption deadline. Of course, we heard this evening on May 13th, we're a study session. Looking forward to further discussions at a subsequent study session. And with that, that is the completion of our presentation, and we look forward to getting some feedback.
Okay, that's great. I'm actually going to take a 15-minute break now before we launch into our discussion. So we will be back at 8 o'clock, okay? Okay, so we were at our discussion time, and I was going to start with Deputy Mayor Malakutian, then me, then Councilmember Hamilton, Lee, and Bargela. Is Lee here? There you are. Okay, so go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
For those who lost track, the topic is middle housing Luca. Thank you, Rebecca, Nick, Kristen, and our amazing Planning Commission Chair Gopold for your work on this. You know, if you do anything perfectly, is still time, is still room for improve. Of course, we can improve our public engagement. It is perfectly fine to disagree with a staff recommendation for us or public or anyone else who sees that. But we should not forget how much time, how much energy they have put in this very, very complex topic. And we all need to have some compassion to the work that they do for our city with all great, great power of they, they are doing this for their city, and they have this ownership. I admire that. Some numbers that I was very surprised to see that. It is, I think, six kind of meeting that they have, and almost 450 people came to those session. And I attended one, I think Councilmember Hamilton was there. And these staff addressed all of these complex question with an amazing attitude as best they can. And again, I understand it's a very, very complex topic, and we can improve, but let's just appreciate what they have done for a second. This session was provide information on the requirements of the bill, the potential scope of the project, and all of these session and all of these feedbacks shaped the whole Luca at the end. And I appreciate that. In developing the Luca, not only planning was involved, transportation, utilities, fire, and building, all played key roles, is not just overnight this happens. I especially want to recognize both Nick and Kristen. They have done a great job with the support of the code and policy team and other development services, planning staff, as well the community development folks that I always appreciate who helped drive this Luca forward. These are the people who really, really wrestle with the complexity of policy and legal requirements, who translate long-range policies and state mandates, implemented a code that now we eventually, thank God, understand, and who navigate the overlapping demands of feasibility, livability, and intersecting priorities. Always to thank my highest thanks to my Planning Commission. They spend a lot of time and energy on this effort and made very important and big decision by this. They ask difficult question, they ask all of the community input, they stayed focused on balance between what's needed and what is the best for Bellevue. I also want to thank our community members, those who support this Luca for affordability, for increased access, and those who have expressed concerns about the impact of this increased density to their neighborhood. We, this council, this body appreciate all of you. Your voices are very important, and hopefully this body find the best balance to address the state mandate, but, and making the housing more attainable for everyone while thoughtfully considering all concerns raised. I have three comments and two questions. First, if you can go back to slide seven. No slide? No worries. Is this slide, is a compliment, is this slide that you talk about infrastructure, and that was one of the biggest concerns that the public has? And of the slideshow. Seven, yeah. So I think infrastructure is one of the main concern that everyone has, and it seems, based on the study, all of those heavy document on the comp plan, the final environmental impact statement, it seems the overall, and again, I know there are going to be some impact in traffic in a specific spot, but overall, it seems the infrastructure concerns has been addressed. So thank you for adding this slide. Go to slide eight, I also liked this slide, that there were many confusion about what is the state minimum, what is the model ordinance, and what is, what Bellevue is doing based on Bellevue? And I always hear, we don't like estate because the state mandate is not for Bellevue. So I'm happy that you are separating all of these and addressing Bellevue's needs. So those are great. The one thing that I would love to hear what lesson learned we get is our public engagement. And I have two concerns. One, what can we do next time to make this complex land use code that I have been involved day, since day one, and I sometimes struggle? How can we make that easier to digest for our community members? There is a handbook I know eventually we send, how can we use that handbook sooner? How can we visualize this very complex topic that if you are not coming to all of the Planning Commission, if you are not reading all of the material, that I expect the normal human beings don't do that? How we can make them understand? So I really would love you guys come back with some ideas that how we can, what lesson learned we get. The other thing about the public engagement is our outreach eventually doesn't get to everyone, and how can we improve that? There was some comments that how, why we cannot use the Bellevue newspaper that's come quarterly and talking about this important topic in those. I'm not sure if feasible or not, or, I don't know, maybe radio, ads, some, something that people learn in a very, we outreach to people, and we teach, educate them, this very, very hard topic and complex topic in an easy way. So that's my engagement. I would love to learn more next time you come back for some lesson learned. But my two question, maybe I start asking Chair and everyone else can jump in, is the ADU and DADU. I noticed that when you are considering the FAR and is it four, assume we are talking about four units per lot for everywhere in Bellevue, why we don't consider ADU, but we consider DADU? Or opposite, sorry. If we have, if I have a property and I have two detached ADU, that counts as my four units. So I cannot build one, I cannot build another one, or I just can build one more. But if I have two attached ADU, I still can add another three or four more. What was that discrepancy?
I'll start, and I'm sure that Kirsten and Nick will have things to supplement. I think, you know, the first point is, if you look at how the code currently treats ADUs, the approach that's being taken is consistent with the current code treatment. I think the second point is just a more of a practical observation that, you know, attached accessory dwelling units are within the envelope of one building. And so, you know, detached ones are separate, and I think when you look at the, you know, the overall impacts and the, you know, perceived density associated with detached units, I think that the Commission felt that there was enough of a difference between the two of those that it made sense to say that, that the detached ADUs should count towards the permitted number of units, and the attached ones that were in the footprint of a, of a single building should not. So that's the distinction that we, we made in making that decision.
Is, that's the answer? Do you have anything to add or?
Anything to add? Kirsten, about ADUs and the decision or the discussion around counting detached towards the unit density but not attached?
Yeah, one of the reasons we looked at potentially exempting ADUs and ultimately landed on and ultimately landed on exempting attached ADUs was to try and incentivize that type of, uh, use. It was one of the types of housing that we felt and heard from the community that was really desirable, um, from a lot of folks, uh, wanted to make sure that that was an option that we weren't discouraging through the Luca.
So again, I want you guys come back if, uh, but the, my hard time to navigate this is to me, uh, ADU means there is a wall between the main house and the smaller house that is not even a smaller anymore, it's big already. Or they are, they, they are bottom floor, top floor. So I don't see that much difference in why we are changing them. Your other argue that is already based on our existing code. We are changing the whole code. So if we can, uh, treat ADU and DADU the same, I think that's what I am more aligned on. So I, I would love to hear more about more ration, why we are treating DADU and, um, ADU different. The other thing that I was struggling, and that's my last question. I have some more, but if you can come back to me later. Uh, the other thing is the height to thirty-eight feet. And I think I understand the ration of livability. And one person said their house is thirty-five feet. And I look at, uh, I went to three houses that there was thirty-five feet. I don't think from outdoor, outside is that much different if you go three more feet higher. But the, but the goal is not to, um, someone build four story structures, am I right?
Yes.
So how are we preventing that? Like how, is there anything? I know, I think someone mentioned is not that feasible, but anything is feasible in this world. So how are we preventing a developer? Because I get that why we are increasing is for livability. Those, uh, people who are living there three feet more than our existing thirty-five foot have a better living standard. I get that, and again, three feet doesn't seem that much different from outside. But how are we preventing someone go and not build four stories?
Yeah, one of the topics that we have discussed in terms of what's typical for a building is it's pretty highly unlikely someone's going to develop a thirty-eight story, or thirty-eight foot four-story structure just because of average ceiling heights in modern construction. Um, at a minimum, most modern construction are going to be nine-foot-high ceilings, if not ten. Uh, the other component is it's really difficult to get at defining what constitutes a story. And that can get really, really tricky and complex with, you know, at what point you start counting something as a story if it's partially submerged into, um, a hillside and you might have an exposed basement. Um, so that just gets at some of the, the areas that would get really complex to try and define in the code in a way that would be able to be applied in a fair way and an even way.
So again, I just wanted to make sure if then you come back, you make sure it, the unlikely of someone make a four-story is absolutely zero chance that someone can make. Because I asked some of, some of developers, they said they can make, uh, with thirty-eight, uh, kind of, uh, feet tall, is still possible to have a four-story. And I think that is too much for our middle housing. So make it to thirty-seven. Like, I, again, I get the increase is for livability of inside, but we should not, uh, it should not be resulted in four-story structures. That is completely to me out of the scale with surrounding homes and neighbors. Uh, Mayor, thank you so much.
You sure you're done?
Yes.
Because you can finish. Okay, I have a lot to say. So, um, I just want to start out by saying that I am firmly committed to increasing homes in our neighborhoods. And, um, yes, we have growth areas in Wilberton and Bell Red, but that's all multifamily housing. And I really want to create more opportunity for people to live in our neighborhoods, for more kids to go to our schools. And so I am committed to doing that. Um, we need to see more people in our neighborhoods who can, we need to make them more affordable for teachers, for firefighters, for police officers, for clergy. And, um, the way to do that is increasing the number of housing and the different types of housing. So to me, it's kind of the state mandated versus tailor-made for Bellevue. I hate state mandates. I like to think that we don't need those to do good work. But sometimes, you know, it's a catalyst for a city and, uh, we don't have an option now. We are going to jump into this. I think we're going to do it sooner than later, but we're going to do it sooner for sure because of the timeline. And it is a great opportunity to tailor-make some of these things for Bellevue and for our specific neighborhoods. I was very much, um, on board with everything I was seeing until I saw the cottages. And to me, you know, cottage depicts a certain type of housing that's friendly for older adults. It's one to two levels, it's a lower height. And, um, the pictures we were showing with three stories and seventeen-hundred-fifty feet, I see the value of that in our neighborhoods, but it's not what I call a cottage. And I want to make sure that we are looking at cottages as what a low-level cottage, like the picture on slide four depicts. I think there's real value in having that as well. So there's, um, you know, you can use a broad knife and make all these decisions or you can be more surgical about it. And I just want to take the time to be more surgical about the nuanced items. So I'm going to tell you what I think are the nuanced items. The fee and lieu, um, the setbacks, the radius around transit, the types of housing. We do have the option to do six out of nine. And to me, what I think we need to put a lot more time into are the cottages, the five-plex and the six-plex, so that we come out, we actually get what we want to see in our neighborhoods with that type of housing. Um, the building heights, do we measure from the ground in front or from the, the bottom of the house? I see some developers digging down into, um, the lots to do lower heights with the same amount, with four stories. I don't, I don't even know how I feel about that, but that's, that's a topic to discuss. FAR, environmentally sensitive areas, um, density and unit counts, tree codes, and lot coverage. So those are all things that I really want to bring back to the council and, and discuss whether we do three at a time. But let's, let's really think about it and let's look at what it would look like in all the different neighborhoods. Every neighborhood's different. Some are more suited for some things and others are more suited for others. And then areas within the neighborhood are better suited for things. And I, I feel like this is one of the biggest decisions I think I, as a council member, has ever, have ever made. And I want to make sure that we're not just using a broad brush. I want to, I think that we have the opportunity to be a little more prescriptive for the different neighborhoods and the different areas in the neighborhoods. And I think we have time to do that if we pass just the bare minimum that we have to pass by July and then go back and spend time and really analyze these. I think we need to educate the public in understandable language as to the impact. I mean, these are mandates from the state and this is how it's going to impact your neighborhood. And I, I'm convinced that we can do this thoughtfully in a way that our children, when they graduate from whatever they're in and come back for their first jobs, can actually afford to live here and maybe even raise a family. And honestly, that's not something we have right now. So we do need to make change. And, um, I'm excited for that. Let's see, I wrote co-living house bill nineteen ninety-eight. I'd love to have a discussion about that. I had questions on slide twenty, but we, you can look at that later after the meeting. Oh, I had one more, eleven, twenty-four to twenty-eight feet, uh, over, and then over the existing unit. So if you have a garage and then you put a detached dwelling unit, unless you call that attached, I don't think so, detached on top of a garage, are you measuring from the bottom of the DADU? Are you measuring from the bottom of the garage?
From the bottom of the garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, I wanted some clarification over. So anyway, that's, that's just my, um, opinion. And I know at the end of the day, we have to true this up with our already past comprehensive plan. And, uh, I know that's hard. I know this is asking for a lot more work from everybody to be a little more prescriptive about it and a little more, um, is, I, maybe I'm saying the opposite. I want to be more flexible. I guess less prescriptive is what I'm actually saying, that we can look at the different neighborhoods and the different areas and, and make our decisions. So that's my thought. I know council is going to have their own thoughts on it, but I'd like to take our time and really navigate this together after we get past the deadline. So I guess I, I'm going to say let's go for the state's bare minimum to start with, just to get that done, and then go back and rean- and analyze all this. Okay, uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation tonight. Uh, thank you Chair Gepel. Uh, I think you and your fellow commissioners have done an excellent job in arriving at a sound recommendation. Certainly appreciate Rebecca and Nick Kirsten, uh, for all of your work as well. I know you've all been extremely busy, uh, but you continue to turn out superior results. I really appreciate it. Also appreciate all the community members who have taken the time to share their thoughts with the planning commission and staff and directly with me. I think your feedback has shaped all of us. Appreciate the deputy mayor and his efforts with the planning commission, and of course, our newest council member Bargava and his efforts. I think there are some fundamental realities that explain the high cost of housing in Bellevue and across the country. Uh, it's clear the approach we've taken has restricted the supply of affordable housing. And if we do not carefully and thoughtfully adjust our policies, we will remain in the same position we are now, and I don't think anyone thinks that's acceptable. Uh, there is a general consensus that we do not have enough homes that folks can afford to rent or buy. And we all agree that housing is too expensive for too many of us. Renters too often find themselves on wait lists and buyers are forced into too many bidding wars. Cutthroat competition drives up prices. Our teachers, childcare workers, and service and retail workers can't find homes that they can afford in our community, and I think we all find that unacceptable. Smaller homes on smaller lots or a converted basement or garage can serve, excuse me, can, can serve some renters and buyers in building a strong foundation of stability and opportunity for themselves and the next generation. Personally, I think we could go beyond the planning commission recommendation and many folks have encouraged us to do so. Uh, I think that I'm satisfied that the recommendation itself accomplishes what the law requires and will open up the door to some much-needed housing. We can always revisit the code if we're not getting the production that we want. We've had a lengthy public engagement process that was significantly informed by our recently completed comprehensive plan update. Nine of our comp plan policies are supported by the current recommendation. I appreciate that community members have had years to provide valuable input on our middle housing Luca. And I appreciate how thoughtfully our staff and planning commission incorporated that input into the current recommendation. Hundreds of community members have provided valuable feedback. But I do not want to forget those that were not able to provide direct feedback for various reasons. Those folks, the vast majority of our community members, current and future, are trusting us to include their concerns and desires into the final Luca. We've had a lot, we have a lot of information to synthesize in making our final decision because that decision needs to be what is best for the entire community. Our best judgment is what represents the voices we haven't heard from directly. Again, thank you for the tremendous effort here. I'm very pleased with the process that the planning commission has conducted. The recommendation that they have made is reasonable and smart. If adopted, it is going to support the production of desperately needed housing. But adopting this Luca is not going to open a floodgate of new housing. I'm sure that we will see some over the coming years, but a lot of things have to fall in place for middle housing to get built. I think we all understand that our substantial supply will come in our designated growth areas like Wilberton, Bell Red, and to a somewhat lesser degree in our mixed-use areas. A couple of quick questions if I could. I'm just wondering if the planning commission recommendation is unique to Bellevue or if other municipalities have adopted similar regulations?
Kirsten, uh, I think you did some research.
Yeah, there's a few jurisdictions that adopted a code recently. One, our close neighbor Redmond, um, they adopted, um, six units by right citywide on any residential lot and up to eight. Um, I believe was too affordable if I remember correctly. Um, some other jurisdictions in other cities have gone further than that. Um, there have been studies done with the University of Berkeley around what could potentially constitute middle housing and provide greater economies of scale. Uh, those can be as many as eight to twelve units. Um, so we felt that our approach was, um, more modest, but still achieving what we feel would be good for the city and also implementing the intent of HB eleven-ten and really helping with feasibility for these projects.
Okay. Do we have, uh, an estimate on how many, uh, housing units we'll get if we adopt the planning commission recommendation?
Uh, it's, uh, Councilmember Hamilton, a little difficult to pin down kind of those estimates because of the amount of variables. Um, and of course, we know that preference plays into this really, um, as well. Um, so property owners, there's still going to be demand for single-family homes. So when sites are redeveloped, it may very well be that a single-family home is there. Um, the best kind of detail or information that we have is, uh, what was completed as part of the comp plan update process, where we set our growth target of thirty-five thousand new units. That is, uh, from twenty nineteen to twenty forty-four. Um, so that requires us to produce fourteen hundred units per year. Um, we were able to at least pull what we've been producing since twenty nineteen when the clock started. Um, and then, of course, you know, we're in this different economic cycle right now. Uh, but since twenty twenty, the city has averaged about twelve hundred units annually. Um, so we're already kind of at a shortfall or behind pace. Um, the middle housing piece, so, uh, as was mentioned tonight, a lot of our growth, we're planning in our growth corridor. Um, Wilberton, you're all discussing, that's, uh, planning for four thousand units in the next twenty years, just in that neighborhood. Um, so there's approximately three thousand units that are falling outside of our growth centers, um, through twenty forty-four. So that's about a hundred and twenty units per year, um, that we'll need those neighborhoods to carry. Um, or about eight to ten units per neighborhood annually, um, that would be needed to provide it if we distributed evenly amongst our, our neighborhoods. Um, and then looking at data over the past five years just on, uh, growth, housing growth outside of our growth centers, um, we're seeing an average of sixty-eight units, uh, per year. Um, majority, of course, are single families, since that is what we allow today. Uh, so that's, of course, also below the level that, um, we've identified in, in our current planning assumptions to get us to that growth target. We need, again, that one-twenty per year, um, in the areas outside of our growth corridors.
Great, thank you. Um, appreciate the comments that I've heard from my colleagues already and from the community members. Beyond that, uh, you know, I think I have all the information that I need, uh, to take final action on the middle housing Luca, so I don't have any, uh, input, uh, for content on a future, uh, study session. So thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Well, I want to thank the staff. You know, you are tackling a issue that has been, uh, I would imagine, I don't use the word, age-old. Uh, so it's very challenging. And I want to give you my admiration for the effort you're putting into it, uh, working with the community, uh, old and new, and, uh, age and young. Uh, because I think this is a, again, age-old problem. Uh, and I want to thank Chair Gop- Gepel and the commission for working so hard in solving a problem that is not readily solvable. Uh, it's, uh, difficult, very complex, complicated to start out with because the solution is very difficult to arrive at because it is something that reflect the need of people who live in Bellevue, who are not even living Bellevue, who are the people that will may be coming in the future and the people who will be, uh, aging throughout the community. Because this is a, again, age-old problem. I myself came to Bellevue in nineteen sixty-eight. That's fifty-seven years ago. I was an engineer. I was an engineer working for Boeing, making $500 a month, and we want to live in Bellevue. Why? For the very same reason why we all want to live in Bellevue, for the reason why we all can, if we can afford it, we all come to live in Bellevue, but not that many people could afford it. At that time, the population in Bellevue is probably 50, 50, 60,000, and right now it's 150,000. And the situation still exists. We're still facing the same problem, the same challenge. And so I want to compliment you all, compliment us all that we're trying to work through this, I call it problem? I don't, I don't call it problem, this challenge. It's a good problem. It's a good challenge because of the thing, the reason why people want to live in Bellevue. And I also appreciate Chairman Gable saying, I had a quick conversation. This is a generational problem. It's people, the younger generation, the middle generation, the older generation, it's the aging generation. We all are sharing this lack of housing that we all want to be able to have because we appreciate Bellevue. You know, it's, it's always been this way. Bellevue is not affordable, but we want it to be affordable. It's a very noble cause, very noble. I want it to be. Everyone of us want to be. So we need to figure out how to do that, and you're, you're just, you're brave soul. You're working so hard for the last few years, and it's not easy. It's number, it's complicated beginning with. There are many ways, many solutions, but what are the right solutions that can, that can fit everyone? It's not easy. So I would like to look at from the big picture, you know, because all the questions we ask are very good questions, starting with Deputy Mayor. It's infrastructure, absolutely. If you don't have infrastructure, you know, you're going to create more problems, right? It's not going to go get cheaper. If you want the infrastructure, you got to, you got to spend money to build it. And the infrastructure doesn't work. It's a cost of more money. We talk about if we have, we just, last, last week, we talked about waste, waste treatment. If we have inadequate waste treatment, if we got more homes, the cost of discharging or helping with waste treatment is going to go skyrocket. So no matter how cheap we build the home, it's going to be not possible for us to pay for the other infrastructure needs. And the question that was raised by everyone, I, I really liked the mayor's idea that, you know, we, we can keep on asking questions. We cannot keep on looking at our ways of solving the problem because we're going to, we have no solutions, honestly, because it costs more money. So it doesn't, doesn't help the overall goal. How do we get the house cheaper? We want to build, we have less, less regulations. We're trying to do that. We're trying to make costs of building less. We're trying to build different homes, cost less. We're doing all these things, but there's not much we can control. Anyway, right now, we're talking about tariffs. All the cost is going to go up, so how are we going to control this stuff? But the big picture is a generational situation. So we need to work together at generational level. How can we be able to live together compatibly? We are, we enjoy living together. We don't mind working together. We don't mind living in whatever condition that might be, whatever house might be available, whatever cottages or fourplex, eightplex, how big the lot we need to have, how many trees we need to have. We need to be able to say, hey, we love to do this. Even in my own family, you know, I have great grandkids. I love to live with them, but how, how much do you think they will put up with me if I live with them for longer than a certain period of time? They say, no, 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 we're rather good at something else. That's fine. They have the freedom to do that. So they can choose where they want to go, but they have to be able to make that happen. I cannot help them, right? They have to find their neighbors, people that we coexist together, how we can make it work. That's what we need to do. So I, I appreciate all the details we're looking at. So I really appreciate the staff. You're working your tail off trying to figure out how to come by. Everybody said we don't like mandates. Mandates is just the opposite, that you got to do this. No, we, Americans, we want to have freedom. We want to make our choices. So let's figure out the big picture. How do we make the choices? Let's figure out how can we talk about experiment? We talk about lots of things. Some of these things can be a good way to do it, but we really don't know until we try it. So I think I kind of like the mayor's suggestion, try something. But I don't want to just say, let's do it all, mandate. It's become a mandate again. It's not stay mandate, becomes our mandate. I have no idea whether we're going to like it, no idea. If we don't like it, people are going to move out. Say, forget it, I can't afford, I don't want to live this way. We're in trouble. We're stuck. So I'd rather see if we can do something as a pilot program, maybe some neighbors don't mind. You know, we have, well, we're talking about Wilberton, we're talking about Bellred. Maybe that's a place we can try some of that stuff. And if anybody likes it, wonderful. And other people say, hey, I don't mind trying that. You know, I can get my grandkids to come to live with me in my, in my cottage. That would be wonderful. When they grew, when they grow up, say, we don't want to do that anymore. Want to go somewhere else? Buy my own home. Good, go, make money. If you can, my wife and I will work two jobs. You know, I've never bought a new car in my life. It's always second-hand car. But I take that money, I was able to buy a home that I feel comfortable with, and that's what happens to my neighborhoods. All my neighbors are like that, right? I make it. So if I have money, cash, I'd be buying my home in Medina. Who cares, right? But that's the point. So I, I feel that let's figure out, we give options to people, we figure out how we can make it happen. And so I like to look at the big picture. I don't want to use the word mandate, you have to do this. And I like to talk to my neighbors. We talk about four-story. Some people don't mind four-story. Some people, no, no, okay, let's go somewhere we can do it. I got a big lot, I got a big thing. Let's work it out. And maybe someone say, hey, that's not bad. I don't mind, you know? If you have a four-story, I can live next to you. Why not? Share the cost. If you like me, I like you. Well, good, right? If, if I don't like you, doesn't matter, I can live a mile from you. You know, I want you in. So that's all I, I, that's all I can say. So I feel that interim staff that we're looking at, maybe just doing the minimum as we can. Try, don't just say this is the rule, this is the mandate. People object to it, well, let's figure out some other way to handle it. People, try it. We are innovative people. We have young people that's supposed to be. Young people has to talk to the old people. Young people now, because of COVID, they just look, talk to themselves, they don't talk to us. So we don't know what they like. They don't know what we like. How can we live together? Let's try it, okay? Works, hey, we'll keep going. So I don't know what we can do, what's the solution. I'm not going to go there because there's many ways to do it, but I like the big picture. Let's figure out how can we live together? Thank you.
Councilmember Bargava.
Okay, thank you. I want to start by appreciating, and I've had a really close front seat view to the team, the city staff team. Incredible work, incredible inputs, incredible diligence, so appreciation and nothing else. Also to Chair Gopel, thank you for incredibly hard work. This is a complex beast of a problem, and working through this hasn't been easy and will not be easy, so there shouldn't be not that expectation. I have the privilege of doing it twice, once in the Planning Commission and I get a chance to do it again, but I have some advantages now. As a Planning Commission, I had a great chance to go deep, but over the last few weeks, I've had the privilege of getting a lot more input from the public. I've talked to a lot more stakeholders as a council member. I get that advantage. I get the benefit of the system panel and the voices that they bring and the rationales they present. And it gives me an opportunity to rethink places where needs to be, that could be rethought potentially, and gives me an opportunity to express, reinforce some of those things that I thought were really good. And that's kind of where I land. So I've heard recommendations that we should just follow the Planning Commission. I've also heard recommendations to go with the state. And I'm, I'm suggesting that there are places, sort of the ideology of taking some of the things that are unique to Bellevue and making them our own places where we believe there is true and somewhat risk averse outcomes that we believe will be positive because that is the important thing to hear state. I'm going to state a couple, three things that are sort of mental model oriented. We want to make sure that we're able to, I, from my perspective, sorry, want to make sure that we put out something that we believe because will lead positive outcomes with very minimal risk. That's important as one thought process for me. Another thing that's really important is this is, in some ways, a one-way door. You make this decision and you go aggressive on certain things that you have more risk on the kinds of outcomes we will get, it is very difficult to walk back. So I'm actually aligned with Councilmember Lee's thinking on test and learn in the areas where we have likelihoods of risk. And when I say risk, we don't think we'll get the outcomes we want. We don't know if the infrastructure is going to keep up. We have certain issues. So when I even, as I was thinking through this, those are two really important things because this has become sort of the backbone of how I talk about, you know, places where I suggest we rethink or re, sort of evaluate some of these suggestions in places where we may not need to. Infrastructure keeping up and the Deputy Mayor pointed out, it's really important to understand the pace of infrastructure and the EIS does that for us versus the pace of development that we foresee happening. But I see this as a possible risk. Infrastructure is a plan best laid to keep with the pace of development. We have to make sure that the implementation of that and how effective it is to keep pace with the changes in the market and how quickly development happens doesn't become a risk for Bellevue going forward. So slow stepping our way into something that could have that risk play out would be important. Housing typologies, we talked a little bit about. I think there are, when I was thinking about the flexibility of the nine housing typologies is great, but when we think about infrastructure support and we talk about grade, when we talk about design appropriateness, I would like to just revisit some of the more complex housing typologies. The mayor already talked about cottages. I would add sixplexes to that potentially and stacked flats, just so that we're making sure that risk is minimized in the inclusion of that as we think about what we implement here. So that's one place. The second place, when we talk about the proposal around the fee in lieu, I think I support the idea of the flexibility, and I think that might yield the outcomes we want in terms of, if you can't build it through performance, we create a pot which allows us to get further progress. But I think that's something to, to look at to see, did we get that right? Are there other considerations? And I think that was already on the list for the mayor, and I would just plus-one that as an area for us to further evaluate to make sure that we've got that right. Quarter-mile and a half-mile around major transit stops had a significant amount of debate even in the Planning Commission as I had a chance to live through this once. And my concerns were, at that point and still remain, are the true nature of the walkability of that half-mile radius. As the crow flies versus on the ground, a half-mile can feel very different. Bellevue is not Chicago, I, I went to school at the University of Illinois. Speed bump is a hill. Here we have true grade differences. And so when we talk about walkability, it becomes important that we understand the grade differences, and we want to make sure that that half-mile versus quarter-mile is a really thoughtful decision because it is probably the singlest largest impact we will have through the subtle increases we are proposing from the state bill, the 1110. And so that would be just another double-click for me to make sure we've got it right, and we can make that decision. And also, I'm going to go back to the mental model of slow stepping it. It doesn't have to be done in one step. There is an opportunity for us to go a quarter-mile, test and learn, and two years later, we can go to half-mile if everything works. There is that opportunity, and we shouldn't lose sight of that opportunity because it is really important that we get it right for Bellevue. Regional growth centers is another place where there is a little bit of a departure from 1110. I do believe that neighborhood centers, which was a possible option on the table for density to be put around, not doing that is the right decision because it feels too dense, too intense for what those neighborhoods are. I walked around them, I drove to them, tried to understand them, and I do believe that is the right outcome. On the quarter-mile around the regional centers, I think there may be an opportunity that I don't feel that is that high a risk because many of those places already have the kind of character that some of that higher density is going to bring. So open to the inputs from the other members of council, but that's just my opinion as that I'm here right now.
What did you say around regional centers?
That I feel like those would be places where in a quarter-mile distance, where it's truly walkable, truly mixed-use, reduces the chance of vehicle miles traveled on the road, creates the opportunity for shopping to happen on foot, which is kind of really interesting in, in a way that, you know, we don't get. Like I live, I live in Bellevue for many years. There's not a lot of trips that I make with my family that don't use the car, unfortunately. So there's an opportunity. The garage exemption, I feel like I think that is a low-risk outcome to go from 250 to 300. It creates the right outcomes, so I'm supportive of that because I'm literally going decision by decision, so I expose the mental model and places where I don't think we need to double-click, just from my perspective. Parking is a big one beyond the quarter-mile, half-mile, which I think is really important. And I think the direction from, or the recommendation from Planning Commission to be cautious about parking and not under-parking our city is wise. While I truly believe that we want to create, and I'm not contradicting myself from the last one, where a quarter-mile from regional, you know, centers is going to allow for walkability, creating a situation where we under-park ourselves with the 1110 proposal is risky. So I'm actually in favor of a space per unit, and I feel that is a relatively low-risk decision and again allows for a revisit over time if we feel that is not required. And so again, not a one-way door for that in my perspective. I think, I'm going to, I'm going to be trying to be quick. Actually, not going to talk about the building height issue as much because I think the Deputy Mayor covered my concern. Want to be very sure, I mean, the, the thought process of 35 to 38 was to allow for pitched roofs for certain building typologies that will allow for flexibility in construction. That was the principal rationale. If that introduces the risk of suboptimal living conditions for someone to build a seven to eight-foot floor height and build four stories, then we are not meeting the intent, and we need to be super careful about that. Because I feel a lot of this is about finding the balance between livability and affordability, and that balance must find itself in many of the decisions that we make today. Not today, but as we make these decisions. These are just places to click. Two other things that didn't really get talked about as much so far, so I'm going to spend two minutes on that, is the tree retention policy. I think that's something that we should think hard about. There are two possible ways to approach this, and I'll go back to the mental model that I started with. We could choose to take the updates as suggested, and then let's take this as a task to monitor progress on how, what the outcomes are if we take this stance. That's one approach we could take, and we could decide to do that. Another approach could be that we stick with the single-family tree canopy guidance and update that as we and update that as we learn more, as new building typologies get built. And that's, gives us a chance to further understand that and test and learn our way into the right solution for Bellevue. So, uh, sorry about that. So that's kind of the push I would make. I feel like I'm not making, uh, I'm not aligned with staying with just the state minimum, but I'm also being really cautious about going with a more aggressive plan. But we should pick the ones where we believe you should slow step it, test and learn our way through it, and the ones that we feel are low-risk, high-certainty positive outcomes for Bellevue, we should go forward with. Because I think affordability and housing choice in Bellevue is absolutely critical.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I'm going to clarify, um, we have some council members who are comfortable with the planning commission's recommendation moving that forward. We have some who want to start with House Bill eleven-ten recommendations and then go back and start looking at certain things. You named a lot of the same things I want to look at, but you also named some things you'd be comfortable off the bat so that the, the third is a hybrid. So, um, I think that I'd like to know how many people are just comfortable moving forward with what has been recommended by staff so that we can either consider that or take that off the table and then look at the other two. So if, um, is there, let's just make a motion to approve the staff recommended or planning commissions. I think that's the same thing.
Mayor, I thought this is a study session and we are not really making.
Okay, we're not making a motion, so I think I can get, just get a head nod. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So can I just get a head nod to those who are comfortable, if we were making a decision tonight, if we would just move forward with the staff slash planning commission recommendation? You are, and?
I am for, uh, except those two questions that I ask, ADU and DADU and the height overall, I support the planning commission recommendation.
Okay. So kind of a hybrid.
Yeah.
Um, can I see how many people would be comfortable with moving forward with the House Bill eleven-ten and immediately coming back and going through some of these things with a little more consideration and, and finding a recommendation for the things I pulled out, the things you pulled out and the things you pulled out? Can I get a?
Can I ask you a question before that?
Yeah.
So, uh, council member Bargava, and you mentioned many, several times that we do something and after two years, what, for example, in some of your examples, what information after two years you would get that would change your mind?
I wouldn't wait two years. I, I'm not, I'm not going to base my decision on waiting two years to see what happens. I just want to have more conversation and, and talk about how, you know, what a cottage actually is, how we define a cottage and?
So there are two questions. One, extending some more meetings to be educated more and learn more about the stuff and have more conversation. That's one part of this discussion. The other part, I think council member Bargava mentioned, like, let's just do some, or maybe councilman Lee also mentioned, let's just do some two-years pilot or do something and then learn. But I just wanted to know, for example, the council member Bargava mentioned, let's just pilot zero-point-two-five from, I think first of all, the distance, I think the Kristen mentioned, they are, am I right, that part of the walkability is going to be part of the application? So it's going to be true walkability regardless if it's zero-point-two-five or zero-point-five? Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be part of the application process that an applicant would have to provide as part of their materials, evidentiary support that they meet either the quarter-mile walking distance standard or the half-mile walking distance standard, like in some kind of a map.
So, and like a true walkable, real walkability that a normal person can walk. So I think that concern of, uh, council member Bargava, I don't think is applied here. But my, my, and again, I just wanted to know what the staff need to do, uh, and if I don't understand, maybe they don't. So after two years of having, going with zero-point-two-five mile, what data are you going to gather that encourages us to go zero, zero-point-five mile or discourages?
We just call it a quarter mile.
What is that? Oh, yeah, sorry. A quarter mile. This is engineering. Uh, assume we go, we start with quarter mile as a state mandate and then after two years, what information do we get to go for zero-point, uh, half a mile or not go with half a mile?
Yeah, so let me respond.
Yeah.
I think we have to build, and two years is an arbitrary number. It could be a time that we decide whatever the revisit period should be appropriately. And we should, my suggestion is that we make or define some performance parameters for how much we get. Fee and loser, there are multiple cases here where we don't know what we're going to get. We should look at how our traffic and infrastructure issues are panning out as this gets built out in a quarter mile. If we feel like in five years, there is an opportunity for us to further densify, it's a clear signal. There are real traffic studies we can do, there is real infrastructure analysis we can do, there is environmental impacts that we can assess through monitoring key metrics. We could also look at the impact of the tree canopy. We can, like, we can set, and I don't have the answer of all the metrics that we would use, but we could create performance standards for ourself that allows us to trigger success or not-so-successful outcomes for what we're trying to achieve here. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, so then I think we are talking about ten years, so it's not two years. And I know you mentioned arbitrary number, but yes, I think we can evaluate all of our decision after ten years because I don't think in two years we'll get any information. So mayor, just answering your question, I, I am okay with having more conversation, but overall, except the two items that I have questioned, I don't even know if I agree with planning commission or disagree, but I just wanted to make, understand more, as you mentioned, more conversation. Overall, I am aligned with the staff recommendation.
Okay. So, um, council member Lee.
Uh, this is good conversation, very good. And, uh, my only reservation is I don't want to be making all these decisions with the council. We have a commission that's there to help us to do all this. They've been doing all this from the beginning and they have listened to what we're talking about. I hope that they can take this job on, clarify with the staff what we're thinking about. And I'm very comfortable for the planning commission to go ahead, to do all that stuff and then back to us to present, to see if we have, you have captured what we are talking about. And maybe then we can still give you some more refinement if we're not clear enough.
So I'm going to?
So that we can get the thing really done right, done well.
I'm going to ask, I think I'm hearing three different things. I think I'm hearing comfort with the staff planning commission recommendation. I'm hearing comfort with the House Bill eleven-ten and then going right into analyzing certain things. And I'm hearing comfort with the planning commission or House Bill recommendation with some caveats on certain things. So, uh, you, you listed a whole bunch of them. I would, is it possible to kind of show us those three options next time you come back and what that would look, look, look like? And then I do, I heard that, uh, from everyone that they want to test and learn by assessing results using performance parameters. And so kind of work that into the final product that we have that ability to analyze the
You've given us a lot to think about.
Yeah.
And, uh, we will digest that and put that in a format that you can consider and make decisions and we have one more study session. So we'll give you another opportunity to shape the final product.
Okay. Um, I wrote down a bunch of things, you said a bunch of things, um, that specifically I wanted to address moving forward. Do you need me to send you an email? Do you need council member Bargava to send you an email or did you write them all down?
We're taking fast notes, mayor. If you'd like to provide that additional clarity, the email will accept it, but I think we've got at least the areas that the council is interested in taking a closer look at.
Well, that sounds good. So, um, you got enough information for us tonight, maybe?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, we have another study session item. I think we can move forward with that. City manager?
Thanks, mayor, um, and council. So this next study session is, um, about Maidenbauer Park. And this park, of course, is an important landmark for our, our park system. Uh, it is the anchor to the Grand Connection and it has been a long-term initiative for the Parks Department and the city to develop this park into a greater access point for the community for the waterfront. So this is an update on the phase-two community design process. Staff's here to talk a little bit and review kind of how they've gotten to this point and the engagement so far that they, that was utilized. Uh, this will inform the recommendation for the next phase of the park development, uh, with the master plan as the guide. And so we have from our Parks Department, um, Community, Parks and Community Service Department Director Michael Shisaki, Assistant Director, uh, Cameron Parker, and Pam Furman, Parks, uh, Planning and Development Manager. With that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Great, thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and members of council. Uh, this evening, uh, council feedback is sought on Maidenbauer Bay Park conceptual design and project sequencing or phasing with a request to consider providing, uh, direction to proceed into architectural and engineering contract, uh, contract stage for phase two. I will say that, uh, this concludes a two-year community engagement process that is similar but more expansive than the public engagement we recently conducted for the Ashwood Park Master Plan update. But, you know, I'll say it is different than, uh, than that process in that tonight's discussion is about implementing a phase of an existing approved master plan and the conceptual design that defines that effort. And it follows the intent of the master plan while balancing the concerns of neighbors with overall community needs. So tonight we'll be sharing the updated conceptual design work and the proposed scope of the phase-two project. So the agenda, first, I'll provide some background and that would be an overview of the Maidenbauer Bay Park and land use plan, uh, that we're continuing to implement. We'll talk about the, uh, robust community engagement over the past two years and move into the conceptual design work and then talk about the community feedback we received on that design and then, uh, discuss sequencing and phasing and specifically the proposed scope for a phase-two project followed by next steps. So, uh, today's work is grounded in the council-approved Maidenbauer Bay Park and land use plan and that plan was adopted in 2010. And I'll say by most measures, that was a monumental process that involved a council-appointed community steering committee that held twenty-one public meetings, fifteen city council meetings, six public workshops, nineteen, uh, board and commission meetings, and two public hearings. And the resulting plan provided a design concept along with future planning and implementation principles and, uh, we are not straying from that master plan. As you may know, master plans are conceptual in nature and they're not detailed design plans, but they show elements and proposed uses and relationships between uses and connections. Phase one construction of Maidenbauer Bay Park was completed in 2019 and it expanded and enhanced the original public beach park that has been at that location for more than one hundred years. It included ecologically enhanced, uh, an ecologically enhanced ravine, nature trails.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Is Pamela okay?
All right, we got a thumbs up. We're thinking about you, Pamela. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
So that first phase included ecologically enhanced ravine, nature trails, and expanded public swim beach, a highly popular curved pier, uh, play area, bathroom, and a kayak So Maidenbauer Bay Park is a key element of the city's system of parks and it's intended to be a park for the whole city to access the public shoreline and waters of Lake Washington. Maidenbauer Bay Park is also a key component of the city's lake-to-lake greenway system and it is the starting or ending point of the Grand Connection. And I'll say it's very much like the northeast corner gateway project at Downtown Park that provides an iconic presence, uh, on Bellevue Way and connects that park to Downtown. Phase two of Maidenbauer Bay Park will create an iconic presence on Main Street and connect Maidenbauer Bay Park to Downtown Park as a part of the Grand Connection. And lastly, the expansion area, phase two, provides a park connection between the developed area of phase one, um, linking it to Main Street at One Hundredth. And with that, I will hand off to Cameron Parker.
All right, thank you and good evening. Um, my role here will be to take a deeper dive into the work that we have undertaken over the past two years on this initiative. Here you can see the, uh, phase one area of the park that, uh, Michael mentioned that was completed in 2019 and the blue area marked is our study area, uh, that we're calling the expansion area that includes the remaining, um, area that the city has control over as part of the overall, uh, complete master plan. Our purpose the last two years has been to continue the work of the 2010 master plan and build on the success of the 2019 phase one, um, while applying contemporary city priorities and land use provisions, uh, and initiatives like the Grand Connection that, uh, weren't discussed back in 2010, um, as well as adhering to the implementation principles in the master plan that do require community engagement as we proceed through each phase of the development of the overall master plan. Our process included intensive community engagement between 2023 and 2025. We used a wide variety of engagement tools, including, uh, webpages, are the city's engaging Bellevue website. Uh, we had multiple, uh, surveys that were provided in, uh, many different languages as well as videos of, on the project that also, uh, had multi-language elements. Uh, there was tabling at community events, um, public workshops, um, three visits to the Parks and Community Services Board, uh, for public meetings, opportunities, and one-on-one meetings with, uh, stakeholders, including the Maidenbauer Bay Neighborhood Association and other stakeholder groups such as, uh, the Bellevue Downtown Association and Chamber, among others. All in all, we, uh, adding everything up, had thirteen thousand six hundred touchpoints with the community over this two-year period in, um, collecting feedback at multiple stages of the, the process. Summarizing some of the key themes that came back from, uh, that initial feedback, the public's interest in, uh, improving multimodal and active transportation or pedestrian and bicycle access to the park, just recognizing that vehicular traffic in that area is already challenging. Uh, so finding, um, different ways to get more people down to the park, uh, more than just, uh, taking your car, at the same time with the, the parking and circulation strategy for those arriving by car, making sure that it's designed in a way that people can get in and out intuitively and quickly. There was a lot of support in the community for, um, community and environmental needs around, uh, opportunities for increasing ecological health in the area, uh, and increasing opportunities for, for public to access the water, um, as well as, uh, interest when we're talking specifically about water-oriented recreation, ways to balance and diversify the different types of, uh, ways that people can enjoy the lake, um, around motorized boating, non-motorized boating, uh, then just the ability to walk and, um, traverse around the water, swimming, of course, and, uh, just providing, um, a nice balance in what people can do at the park. And then, of course, parking always comes up and is always a divided topic. We have, uh, strong feelings on both sides in terms of deprioritizing parking at the park and, uh, providing increased supply as well. So taking that over. So taking that overall expansion area that was shown in blue, we divided it up into sub-areas for a specific study. We will, as we go through each of these areas, will describe the conceptual work that was done and focus on the community and feedback and priorities that we heard. The 2010 master plan is the foundation for that work and how that's reflected in the design response. So we'll start with the Maidenbauer Gateway and we'll work our way counterclockwise. So for the gateway area, the community priorities that we heard in this area were an interest in having views from this location out to the bay, wanting to see more shade tree and vegetation, and a great interest in the flexible multi-use plaza that's in the existing master plan, as well as interest here and actually across the park in providing more weather-protected gathering spaces, which was seen as an opportunity to enhance what features we have here. On this slide, you can see the 2010 conceptual work of this area as well as the updated 2025 work. They have the same basic programmatic elements, but they are configured differently. Those elements include the plaza at Main Street, pathways, and parking. Looking at the plaza here outlined in pink, they are, there's a slight difference in the 2025 concept in sort of elongating the plaza or bringing it closer to that intersection with Main Street and centering more of the activity away from the property's edge. In looking at the pathways, there is a significant change in, again, the fundamental opportunities to get pedestrians down from the Main Street elevation down to the water. In 2010, there was a grand staircase that's located in where 100th Street currently is now. It was designed to be closed to vehicular traffic, as well as then an accessible route from the plaza to the water in more of a straight-line orientation, but that required two different elevators to make the grade down. The 2025 vision keeps 100th open to vehicular traffic and does not rely so much on the grand staircase but a pathway that is accessibly designed that zigzags its way down the hillside without the need of elevators. In these cross-sections, you can kind of give you a sense, still showing the, this is the accessible route in 2010 that required those two elevators to make the grade down in a much more linear fashion. And the 2025 plan, in response certainly to feedback from the community, just takes, tries to follow the level of the grade, taking a more tapered approach through these switchback trails that still remain elevated, but at making the grade down without being quite as elevated at certain points along the hillside. You can also see here the parking strategy. In 2010, that plan included structured parking in this area. In 2025, we have more of a modified surface-level parking that's sort of built into the side of the hill. And you can see what that parking looks like. This strips away the top layers of the plaza and the walkway or the canopy walk. And so you can see the parking bays there that lie underneath. When you get to the bottom of the gateway plaza, you transition, if you're on that canopy walk, you transition to the bay connector. That is elevated. It does go over the top of an existing driveway to neighboring condominium complex, and then takes users out over the water for experience as it continues to work its way down at an accessible grade to the promenade below. The bay connector is, and the canopy walk as well, has been designed with neighbors in mind to screen views from side to side and really focus the users on the views out into the water and out into the bay and providing gathering spots as well along the way. And it's really designed to be an iconic feature and portal into the park and something that people will really enjoy and kind of tell their friends about as their experience in Maidenbauer Bay Park. Once you reach the bottom, you are on the shoreline promenade. The promenade, the community priorities that we heard in looking at this area were to provide more seating opportunities, preference for the naturally-planted shoreline condition, and adding, again, opportunities to stop and not just walk through, such as providing picnic tables. So again, here we have 2010 compared to the 2025 conceptual work. For the promenade, it looked very similar. We did respond, and the 2025 design does have little places to stop and added some seating along the way. Adjacent to the promenade is the marina area. This is just a view of the current marina for those that may not be familiar with the Bellevue Marina as it exists today. Again, top community's priorities for this area included the ability to walk out on a public pier and viewing open water as well as wildlife. Here, with the side-by-side comparison, there is, again, programmatically, a lot of the same elements, but some reconfiguration done currently to reflect, in 2010, we had sort of one major access point of the existing Pier One or the Whaling Building Pier, if that's more familiar with that. The 2025 concept divides, keeps two separate piers. The Whaling Building Pier, Pier One, is, remains, is focused with more public use in transient mortgage and visitor mortgage, except for the two end slips there on Pier One. And then, the more private, secured leased mortgage is on its separate pier, which is the current location of Pier Three. Each have their own kind of opportunities for loading and access, and that just make the functionality work a little bit better than combining all of the mortgage together and accessible only from Pier One. Then, we sort of work our way up the hill to the Sunset Terrace area. This is, to some degree, part of the current Phase One area, but there's sort of an undeveloped spot that we have graded out and is used. But the master plan in 2010 envisioned another opportunity for structured parking in that location, as well as a community building. In our community discussions and hearing priorities back, the community had a preference to defer that community building and really focus on improved pedestrian access up and down that steep hill, which is what we have reflected in our 2025 work that does not include structured parking at this location and does not include a community building, but is designed in a way that provides more opportunities to get up and down that hill at this location. And that finally brings us full circle around to Lake Washington Boulevard. That strip of streetscape was definitely an important way to join the existing Phase One park over to the new expanded gateway area, as well as to Main Street. This would be a future transportation project, and certainly something that Parks and Community Services and Transportation would work together on what the design of this streetscape would be in the future. All of this information was collected and shared with the community, again, in a survey to collect their satisfaction on what we had designed in concept. And in whole, there's strong positive support for what the concepts show and the different modifications and evolution of design that were made from the 2010 plan. The one area that's worth noting that had more mixed results was the marina and bay connector, where about 30% of the feedback on that area was more on the unsatisfied with the design as shown, whereas 58% was more satisfied with what was shown. The other areas had stronger percentages of satisfaction with the designs that we shared. So a quick word on parking. This map shows the existing parking locations today. Since we opened the 2019 phase, we have studied the, the performance of the existing parking supply extensively every year to see how they're used, which was helpful in looking at how we might modify the parking supply and location in the future. This Phase Two plan keeps the parking supply and locations that are in the current Phase One and does make a significant move, taking a lot of the parking that today is along the shoreline and moving it to the gateway parcel, which is still consistent with the 2010 master plan. It gives us an opportunity to increase the stall count. We'll note that stall count is based on our current work, but will continue to be evaluated over time as we move through future iterations of design. But do see a need to increase the stall count just to accommodate for future park features that we're adding as well. So then, moving to the discussion of sequencing and phasing. This image brings us back to that key map of the expansion area. The three drivers that we consider in a phasing approach are just practical considerations of what needs to come first before something else can be designed and constructed, again, community feedback that we received, and available budget. When we asked in a survey how members of the community would phase or ask them what we should focus on or prioritize, what they want to see next, these are the results that came back. A lot of support for that stretch of Lake Washington Boulevard to be improved, and then rounding out a top-tier focus, interest in focusing on the Maidenbauer Gateway and shoreline improvements. In a second tier, sort of a clearly differentiated second tier were the Sunset Terrace area, the marina, and that activity building as well. That community preference actually lines up with the sort of practical way that you would approach the phasing, particularly around the gateway area with that move in, in taking the parking and moving it from the promenade area up into the gateway. Looking at the funding we have available, we currently have $35 million in CIP that has been identified for this Phase Two work. Considering community priorities and practical next steps, we have put together a package using very rough cost estimates that would include a significant amount of work at the gateway plaza, an important step of connecting the shoreline promenade, not going into all of the ecological work yet, but focusing on getting that pedestrian connection from the gateway over to Phase One, and some improvement to the intersection at Main and 100th. Again, going back to all of our different areas and using more of a red-yellow-green approach, the Maidenbauer Gateway for Phase Two and a portion of the shoreline promenade would be the sort of the green light for Phase Two. The yellow light areas, Lake Washington Boulevard and Sunset Terrace, are ones we wouldn't prioritize. We could find ways to do elements of those over time as funding allowed. The marina and the bay connector features, those are large-scale, expensive projects that we would push out to a future phase and not continue design of those at this time. That would look something like this, where you've clipped out the gateway element, as well as that shoreline promenade path to include the parking, and a modified or a plaza at the top of Main Street. That, using this graphic here, would show you sort of a vision of an open plaza in the second phase, not including what has been pictured there with the covered pavilion as being out of our budget scope for Phase Two. This is just a great opportunity to visualize the space and see how magnetic it will be in terms of achieving a lot of the city's vision of both the Maidenbauer Bay master plan, as well as the Grand Connection vision. Looking at timeline, we are here at the end of our community input and conceptual design phase, seeking feedback. If we move forward into more of a design and permitting phase, we expect that would take approximately three years to get through before we would be constructing anything. So construction timeline would be out in the 2028, 2029 timeframe. With that, we'll return to our direction slide, and we would welcome any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll start with Councilmember Hamilton, since he's the liaison to the Parks and Community Services Board.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Michael, Cameron, Pam. Also appreciate that we have Chair Kleema from the Parks Board with us tonight, and Paul Clark, a member of the Parks Board as well. Appreciate the presentation. You got through 39 slides pretty quickly, so thank you for that. I was a little concerned there for a second, but well done. The entire community puts a tremendous amount of value in our parks, open spaces, trails, and programs. I appreciate all of your efforts in making sure that whenever our community turns to the Parks and Community Services Department, that they get the best of the best. We consistently hear from the community that they want more access to the waterfront along Lakes Mamish and Lake Washington. I think with each step we take in enhancing and increasing access to our waterfront spaces, we're met with appreciation and excitement. I share those feelings, and I'm thrilled to see us take the next steps at Maidenbauer Bay Park. I look forward to taking the next steps along Lakes Mamish when the time comes to do so. Maidenbauer Bay Park serves the entire community, and as such, we need to be sure that each phase of development prioritizes the needs and desires of all of those who call Bellevue home. And when we talk about community priorities as they relate to the park, we are talking about the wider Bellevue community. I do think we need to pay special attention to those living near the park as they are uniquely impacted by changes that are made to the park and surrounding area. With that in mind, I am especially pleased to know that we are not going to close 100th Avenue, as had previously been decided. The decision to close 100th was made years ago, and as we went through Phase Two planning, the planning process, community input and park staff analysis led us to the decision to keep 100th open. I think that was the right decision. And while I believe that what is being considered for Phase Two is going to be wonderful, I want to be sure that we can continue to engage the community and are mindful of their concerns, if any arise, as the work on the park moves along. Also, just would like a little bit of clarity on Phase Two. And so as I understand it, we're looking at Maidenbauer Gateway, East Parcel, Gateway Intersection, and interim development of the Lakeside Promenade. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, a future phase, we will include the other elements, but we're not exactly sure which elements might be in which phase?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so Lake Washington Boulevard, Sunset Terraces, Shoreline Edge, Marina, Bay Connector, Park Lane, those are all for a later phase? Okay, cool. Just a note, as we move forward, I want to encourage us to tell the story of the significance of Maidenbauer Bay, and especially of Park Lane, and how it served as a gateway to what eventually became the city of Bellevue. Many journeys to Bellevue began... eventually became the city of Bellevue. Many journeys to Bellevue began at the ferry landing at the bottom of Park Lane, as many journeys on the Grand Connection will someday. I'd like to see us tell that fun, an interesting story. But a couple of questions for you. So for Phase Two, I'm just curious how, if you can, maybe you can't, if you could tell me what percentage of the Phase Two development occurs on the Gateway site?
And Pam, I believe you have some of those.
We're looking at about thirty-five thousand dollars to develop the Gateway site, and about seven million on the shoreline. So you can take that to a certain extent to talk about the ratio of what kind of percentage of work will be done and/or completed.
Thirty-five million.
The gate was thirty-six, not thirty-five, sorry, thirty-six thousand, million.
Okay.
Oh, million, yes.
If you can do it for thirty-six thousand.
What a deal!
We'll approve that, no problem. And then two, and I think you've mentioned this, but as we move into these next phases, that'll include more public engagement. We'll go back to the public and have go through a similar process that we've gone through for Phase Two. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And I know too that we don't have a recommendation from the Parks Board for Phase Two, as we did earlier tonight from the Planning Commission, but just curious if you could just kind of explain why. I mean, I think what we're going through is typical. We wouldn't normally if we already have a master plan in place, but could you just talk to that a little bit? I know there's been some things that have gone on with the park.
Yeah, correct. And I would say one difference between this and the recent Ashwood Park master plan update is, in that case, we were updating, creating basically a new master plan. Here, we're implementing a phase of a master plan. So this was reviewed by the Park Board at three of their meetings. They listened to much of the public testimony at each one of those meetings, and they were certainly a source of input into this process as obviously a key constituency, yes.
All right. Again, I think that what is before us will make a wonderful park even more wonderful. I like the direction. I'm concerned that Phase Two will have some impacts to those who live closest to the park. And as long as we do everything we can to mitigate those impacts, I think I'm ready to move forward with what's proposed. I think with Phase Three, when we're likely to focus on the Marina and Bay Connector, we'll need to reengage the community, as you said you will, to address specific challenges for those sections. So I just I appreciate all that's been done, and thank you to everyone involved in planning for Phase Two. I want to encourage us to move forward with Phase Two if we're ready, so we can start dreaming about Phase Three.
Thank you.
I'm Councilmember Bargava.
Yeah. So thank you for a really, really nice presentation. My first exposure really to the vision in a meaningful way, and it's incredible. Maidenbauer Park is a Bellevue icon, and what you've got here and the way the presentation allows you to envision it is going to be quite remarkable. I really appreciate, one of the things we talked about, being an iconic element, and I think that is really important because I truly believe the design is inspirational and adds to that draw that Maidenbauer Park has. I also really appreciate all the work that's gone in to get us here, so tremendous. The differences from 2010 to 2025 are great. I'll talk about just very quickly two, three things that jumped out at me. I truly appreciate the truly universal accessibility that builds itself into the design here. I think that's wonderful. I think we should still think about an elevator despite that to make sure that everyone can enjoy this amenity. But the design is a definite evolution in the positive direction. Wonderful. The other thing I also really like, as a architect, design planner in heart, the ability to access these public spaces at grade from the parking. It creates for a much more welcome and accessible urban design for this or landscape design for this park, which I think is a really good plus as well, as I think through the evolution over the last, you know, fifteen odd years, as you talked about. I have only two suggestions on this. They're not blockers. I would be, I would also recommend the same in terms of moving forward. One of them is I'm concerned that, and this is a clarification before a concern, the parking that we talked about in terms of number of stalls, is that across multiple phases that gets through a larger number, or is it within each phase that you're actually exceeding the parking available? Because I think as a user of Maidenbauer Park, one of the challenges I face routinely as a family is the lack of parking there, especially on the weekends. So that's one question. And the same question applies on mortgage, like it is a genuine concern that are we reducing the number of spots available? And what is the point of view on that? And how do we make sure that we meet the needs of the city meaningfully? If you don't mind, I'll just lay out my second concern or question. It's not a concern really, it's just a suggestion. I think wayfinding in this would be really important, and I may, you can just point me to how I can understand how you think about a meaningful wayfinding plan here for the master plan and by phase. I think that would be interesting. And the last thing is somewhat of a Debbie Donoh comment, but like the things that you don't want to think about. In these public spaces in today's time, I think we need to make sure that we have great wayfinding accompanied with sheltering in place if ever need be. And I just would encourage us to think about how that is going to be handled in a public space like this, God forbid, ever required. And so those are all my comments.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. The Maidenbauer Bay Park, you know, is the, well, Maidenbauer Bay itself is the iconic landmark of Bellevue, but that need to be preserved. So it's a very important landmark for the city. And, you know, as we know, it connects all the way from the thing that made Bellevue is the Wailing Center, right, for the Pacific Northwest. And it connects all the way through downtown Paris, through downtown Bellevue, all the way now through the Grand Connection, and then all the way to the east side of four or five, and now to the Wilburton. And even more than that, you know, it goes all the way through Belvedere Corridor, all the way into Redmond. So it's really a very significant piece of history, even though we know Wailing is no longer fashionable, so we don't want to emphasize too much. But still, you know, that's the history of Bellevue. So I think what you have done, obviously, you know, is toward showcasing and identifying this very important landmark. The only thing that concerned me that I have some questions about is it also impacts the people who live there, who are the most impacted, that would be affected, things would change for them. You know, when you have landmarks, when you have historical preservation, and people who live there, you know, they're going to be impacted. And we heard from them today, you know, at the public hearing. So I would like to make sure that, you know, their concerns are addressed, especially when they feel that the people who are most impacted, their voice have not been heard, or at least it's not being addressed. And so there seems to be a misunderstanding between the consultant and the community that have voiced their concern. So I hope that's just a misunderstanding. Maybe it's just not understanding the priorities of the city. You mentioned this is for the whole city, but unfortunately, there's a community, including the Yachre, what's it standing? You know, are they going to be part of the history? Or are there going to be a phase that's going to be passed? And the people who live there, what impact this this have on their everyday livelihood? So we heard people who lived there since nineteen ninety, and so what's, how are they impacted? So I would like to have you maybe, you've heard them, you've seen their information is submitted to you, and so if you can maybe address that a bit, then I'd be, you know, well, then we have some response to them and see if they understand, or if there's some arrangement that can be made, so we can move forward. So if you will, please.
You know, I, we realize that the Maidenbauer Bay Neighborhood Association, obviously one of our key constituencies in the Bay, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. We realize there will be additional impacts as as the park grows in its extent, and we do attract more people down there as more people want to gain access down to the public shoreline. But we are working closely with them. We have had specific, I believe, along the way, I know they've attended all the public meetings, and we've met with them as a separate stakeholder group. I think one of the key areas that, you know, was laid out in the master plan was some reduced slips at the Marina. We realized that. I think there still hasn't necessarily been an agreement on that. That is certainly not a part of this next phase. And as as that perhaps becomes a part of the third phase, there will be obviously many more conversations to figure out what might be a happy medium in that number of slips to remain long term.
About obstruction of their viewpoint from their, you know, their condo where they live. And so how do you respond to that? How do you address it? You know, I mean, what kind of conversation have you had so that there's a
You know, I think in terms of parking.
Resolve their conflict.
Right. I think one of the issues, I think, in the original master plan was understanding parking. So we have every year done those parking counts to have a better idea of how the park is used, how many parking spaces are typically used on a on a daily, weekly basis. So we do have all that data that does show that part of the issue at Maidenbauer Bay Park is probably wayfinding and that there may be available spots, but because the parking is a bit dispersed, not everyone knows where the parking is. So I definitely hear the whole, your comment about the need for better wayfinding and having those people know where the typical available spots, and that's probably more in the ravine than where they currently are. But we are looking at adding more parking. We've heard that. And I think, as Cameron mentioned, that, you know, that kind of, that we get split advice on that from the community. Some people want us to deprioritize that, want people to find other ways to get there. But then, you know, we also don't want our patrons parking throughout the neighborhood. So I think there's another area of finding a happy medium.
Is there any possible mitigation that you have discussed, or will be maybe able to discuss?
I would add the two major decisions that have been reached in this work were what's been discussed about keeping one hundredth open, which was a significant concern. That is, I don't know if that would qualify as a mitigation, but it is an acknowledgement of the neighbor, the direct neighbor's interest in keeping that vehicular access, as well as not including the community building that was also in the 2010 plan as that, which drives more or attracts more users and parking. So it's a way to take one step toward moderating the amount of use at the park by not including that community building.
And that was in the 2010 plan, so, yeah.
I hope you can continue to have this, you know, conversation with them. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, Cameron, Pam, thank you so much. Cameron, you did a great job, man. I read the board agenda and the whole report, and I didn't get anything. But you did such a great job explaining everything through all of those graphs. So you are the true reason that we still need teachers. We cannot just read and rely on ChatGPT and stuff. So great job.
I think he also wrote the memo, but kidding, kidding.
The memo was a little bit neat.
One of them.
No, but thank you. The presentation was great. I really, and because I think, like Councilmember Bargava, I also do not have that much prerequisite of this. So the presentation was great. One question that I also asked was, like, why the council members couldn't get a debrief on that before the meeting? I think that would be very helpful for the next time. And I, and for me, it's just a technicality and like half an hour, and again, I know he's asking staff for more stuff, sorry. But having a half an hour like this for me before the meeting, or before, then I could be more prepped to talk to stakeholders and constituents and be more prepped. So great presentation. Like all of my council members, I am also really excited. I think the Phase One has truly transformed the whole team. I also, like Councilmember Bargava, go there. Parking is a huge issue for me. Usually, I park on Main Street and then walk because I can't find parking. The way finding is really, really important. So I appreciate Council Bargava brought that. I am very excited about the opportunities that is coming. Want to thank the Councilmember Hamilton for a great job on the park. Thanks, Paul, and the Chair sitting back there on the Park Board. And thanks for all of the community. They contacted us, they emailed us. Great. Kudos for not closing one hundred. I think that was a great decision. Community building, I don't know what, how I'm feeling about that. One question Councilmember Lee asked about, are we in Phase Two specifically? Are we blocking anyone's view by anything that we are building?
Actually, we, you know, we are taking down several buildings. There's a duplex right on the waterfront, another building that I think some would consider view blocking. We're also replacing that with open space where there are some current apartment buildings that pay views. So, you know, I guess it's what, I don't believe in this phase there would be view blockage that I can.
There will be change.
Yeah.
There will be.
Change is good. We are not blocking anyone's view, though.
At the conceptual level, we've done some really rudimentary, you know, blocking analysis. It is an area that deserves more work as we move forward with more designs to to just analyze that more. And certainly, it's something we would keep top of mind as we move forward.
I would also share that the design term, the design team heard loud and clear at the very beginning of this process, how important views were to neighbors and how important it was that neighbors are able to maintain their views. So the design team worked very hard to make sure that there was, if anything, less obstruction than more obstruction.
That's awesome philosophy. So, and you said in the Gateway play, the area, you are not building any parking. You're just using some slopes and having, if you can go to a slide thirty, I think that would be great.
We're not building any structured parking, meaning in a parking garage. There are two bays built basically as you step down the hillside, so you have direct grade access down the walk to get into the shoreline area. So, yeah, no structured parking, but we are definitely building.
Adding park.
Yeah.
If you go, if you go to a slide thirty again, thirty-one, I have one question there too. So there is, in slide thirty, there is some parking that is now being removed in thirty-one. That, yeah, that's below that area. What is the rationale of removing the existing parking and putting them in the gateway?
I would say in part, you know, providing this connecting shoreline promenade is a is a priority. I think the other part is, from an environmental standpoint, I think the highest and best use is not parking cars on the precious shoreline of Lake Washington. So I think it's always been a goal, and in the goal of the master plan, to get the parking off of the shoreline.
In addition, from just a circulation point of view, having a concentrated amount of parking as near to Main Street and a Hundredth as possible, makes it easier for people to get in and get out without having to drive down the hill and into that area where the current parking is today.
Thank you. And the concern of Councilmember And the concern of Councilmember Lee of reduction of the boat parking, you said, is going to be addressed in the next phase.
Parking is going to be for the Marina would be accommodated at the gateway. However, there is loading, unloading and accessible parking down at the Marina that remains.
I'm talking about the boats.
The mortgage.
Oh, the mortgage.
Yeah. So I thought I thought we are going down from seventy boats slip to thirty boat asleep.
The twenty ten master plan does envision a significant reduction in the leased mortgage that's at the current Marina. Having that, that won't change. It's in the master plan, but it's not part of what we're proposing for a phase two.
And there would be some additional study and some community engagement for that reason. Okay, great. I have maybe one more question, Mayor, and then. Actually, I don't, I have one suggestion. I am now much more fluent in this. Thank you for the debrief and this presentation. And I think because, and I don't know if, Mayor, are you going with direction or not? But my recommendation would be now the public and stakeholders now have understanding. There are there were some misunderstandings that I've read that is not anymore applicable. So now they have time to go and more digest. And we have, we don't have two council members here. I would recommend if there is not a big lift, we delay by one week or two weeks the direct approving the direction and leaving it with more understanding of the topic with the stakeholders and having the two council members that we are not here, giving them a chance to weigh in in this topic. Thank you, Mayor.
Leave early if we get done.
I make a motion to extend the meeting to ten fifteen.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I got to be on the Parks Board when we did the whole design of this. Another snooze. I think you have to like totally turn it off. When we did this design and then I got to be on the council when we voted it in, the master plan. And so I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and listening to the neighbors' concerns and and their comments on this. And so I'm going to say, you know, historically Maiden Bower Bay was a recreational area. And I used to treat, you know, as a physical therapist, I worked with a lot of older adults in Bellevue and heard the stories of them coming down here in the summer and swimming and just, you know, it was a, it was the beautiful place for them to swim and they'd spend the whole day there. And then it's always had a boating history as well. So you have the Whaler Fleet and you have the Yacht Club that started in, I think, the forties. But before that, you had people, all these sailboats that were trying to sail out of there before the floating bridges were in place. And so it has a very strong history of boating and recreation. And I feel like the boating part is getting kind of truncated here. I'm really sad to see public mortgage, which is so hard to come by, reduced as much as it is. But when I walk down there and I see the ugly roofs on the covered mortgage, I can see why nobody would want that. So I would ask that you take the roofs off in phase two and give the public the look of just a Marina. Because a Marina is a very pretty sight. It's just not cute when you have ugly roofs on it. So that might be the first thing to do. I'm glad to hear that you're going to have loading, parking and parking for disabilities. Because if you don't have parking down by the boats, you're not going to, it's going to be really hard for people to haul all their equipment down there. So loading zones are really good, but you may, you know, you have two lanes of parking. You have the lane up against the water edge and then you have the lane against the rockery. If we could retain at least the parking along the rockery for Marina people, I think that would be huge benefit. And especially since you're not going to get the parking done until the end of phase two. So people are not going to be able to get, use the new parking until the end of phase two. So maybe we need a little bit of a transition there. Slips. I think that's all I had to say. We don't have two council members here. This is a big deal to the people in this area who use the park in all the different ways that they do. You've heard our comments. I wonder if we could come back with incorporate some of the ideas you've heard so that we can have another discussion with our other two council members. Can we schedule that?
Mayor, we will look for an opportunity to schedule it. We'll certainly look for also opportunities to get feedback from the two council members before this comes back. We'll work with staff.
Okay, and we would appreciate that. I think I don't think, just I'm talking just a minute, please. I don't think I've heard anybody, well, maybe Dave, Councilmember Hamilton, who's ready to go. But there seems to be, you know, a lot of interest in in looking at some of the nuances of this. So yes, Councilmember Lee.
Following up with your question about the about mortgage was I heard that there's two hundred some people waiting on the list. So are we going to pare down the boat mortgage or are we going to keep it the same size? We're going to increase it. What's what's the plan for that?
Not in this phase.
Is it long term?
Before, before, in phase three, four or five, depending on how many phases there are for development. We would address the Marina and we would reach out to the community again. Currently, there are eighty eight people on our waitlist.
How many?
Currently, there are eighty eight people on our waitlist.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a lot to talk about. Did you want to?
Can I take one, ten more, ten more seconds?
Of course.
Just one question on the the slide with the money on it. Thirty five versus forty seven?
Thirty five thousand.
Thirty five thousand, yeah.
Yep.
It's just one question. If you are going to come back and revisit this, it'd be great to just get a point of view to make sure that we have the T V Ds and we have just a point of view on where and how this capital budget that we require to get this implemented. When you're thinking about this, is there a gap that one needs to be concerned about? That's all.
So when you bring it back, maybe we can include that.
And I think part of it is that, you know, we plan to apply for additional state grants and other funding to supplement the dollars we currently have. Obviously, you have to have a project to sell. And so, you know, reaching some certainty on this, we need to do that before we can apply for grants.
Understood. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the last thing, I'm going to see how far we get. And we could just do the state and bring the federal part back another week. But if we can get through it all, let's let's try.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and staff is prepared to do this rather quickly or truncated a little bit tonight. We would like to cover the state legislative wrap up and maybe just basically introduce the federal agenda and that can come back for direction. So with that, I'll hand it over to Genesee Atkins, our Deputy City Manager, Katie Kasimba Halsey, our Intergovernmental Relations Director. Genesee?
Wonderful, thank you, City Manager. So we will really take a little bit of a modified approach to this and really focus on our state wrap up. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you the direction slide, but we will revisit this, not tonight, but at a future meeting. What we're going to do first is give you the wrap up from my excellent colleague, Katie Halsey. She's going to go through what happened in Olympia this session. We've had an opportunity to brief almost everyone on the draft federal agenda. So we will come back to that, but not tonight. So we'll go ahead with the state level and I'll hand this over to Katie, who will drive. And then if we've got a minute to preview the federal issues, we can do that tonight and then come back to it later. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Councilmembers. It was a very long session, but this is going to be a very short presentation. Also long is a excellent wrap up summary that is in the council packet. That is a full list of the priorities that Bellevue focused on and how they met within the strategic target areas. So I'm going to give you a quick flyover, but I just wanted to say for the record, there's an excellent summer, excellent report that is in your council packet. Okay, so it was a long session, a hundred and five days. It was also the time when the House and the Senate have to propose their three budgets, operating, transportation and capital budgets. There was a lot of work that happened this session to accomplish that task. But there was also a lot of other things that were happening during session. There was a new governor. There were twenty four members that were in new seats. And there was some sadness in the session with the passing of former Speaker Chop and also Senator Ramos. So a lot of, the lot was going on, not only behind the scenes, but also in the public this session. But out of that, they were able to introduce three thou, over two thousand, so two thousand three hundred and eighty seven bills were introduced and four hundred and twenty three bills were passed. Out of those bills, Bellevue had been monitoring or reviewing, working with our departments on three hundred and sixty one of those bills. We took an active, active role in over sixty five of those bills and we signed in or provided testimony on over a hundred bills this legislative session. Many of those were testimonies from you all. So I want to take this time to say thank you. Your messages to legislators, your emails, your letters to the legislature, your testimony and listening to me and Genesee throughout the session were incredibly valuable. And so I want to say thank you.
Can I stop you just for one second? Can somebody ask the people to move to the right? Just when they stand in the middle, it reflects back here. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I won't go through the details of the operating capital and transportation budgets because those are, that information is in the packet. However, I do want to just put into some context. We started out this session with a fifteen to sixteen billion dollar shortfall for the operating budget. And in the transportation budget, it was about a billion dollars over two years and even more so over the six year budget. And so that was really driving much of the conversation that was going on this session. Ultimately, there were revenue proposals. There were many revenue proposals. The governor weighed in substantially on those revenue proposals. At one point, the revenue package was approximately twelve billion and eventually was drawn down to nine point five billion over four years of new revenue. So that was a significant shift that the governor placed, actually, I'm sorry, sixteen billion dollars at the first start of the session to nine point five at the end of the session. So a lot of pressure from the governor. The the operating budget does rely on modifying business and occupational tax surcharges, repealing certain tax preferences, creating a more progressive rate structure for capital gains and estate tax and extending the retail sales and use tax. So a quick high level flyover of our priorities. We spent a lot of time this session working on the Bellevue Grand Connection and requesting funding for that important project. We did receive two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the capital budget. We we asked for more, but it was a very tight budget, as I just mentioned. So we're very happy to have legislators come along with us in support of this important project. And then we also requested a substantial amount of money for the Bellevue Grand Connection in any kind of transportation revenue package. While that did not happen, we were very grateful, thanks to your leadership and also thanks to leadership from members in the Senate Transportation Committee. We were very grateful to have tax increment financing that is available to Bellevue for this project. The tax increment financing will be a lot of work, so we're getting started right away. We'll need to work with our partner jurisdictions to get their support. And in this particular case, the tax increment financing would be for an amount of five hundred million dollars of property value versus the written into law was two hundred million dollars. So a significant improvement for Bellevue that we would not have received had it not been for your help. We were able to receive the funding to complete the projects on I four oh five and one sixty seven. However, we did not fare as well for five twenty one twenty fourth. And also the E-City Gov Alliance budget request is not moving forward this year. We'll continue to work on both of those projects in the future. Another area of our legislative agenda was policy based and really focused on housing and land use. Some have said this is the second year of of the major housing sessions. And I think that, as you see on the screen, it was a really, really big year for housing and land use. Six bills that had been worked on over many, many years were passed this legislative session. Lot splitting, condo liability reform, T O D, REIT flexibility, Housing Accountability Act and minimum parking requirements. We'll be coming back to you many more times in the future, just as you heard about this earlier today in the presentation about middle housing. Some other notable policy bills, Extended Producer Responsibility or the Recycling Reform Act, public safety funding. That's something that I'm really interested to talk with department staff to see how we can take some, a look at using the grants that that includes. Rent stabilization did pass. It wasn't one of our legislative priorities, crisis co-response and childcare services. Now, something that didn't get approved that we'll continue to work on this legislative session is the transit lane access. And just a really quick note of thanks and gratitude to former Councilmember Zahn, who championed that legislation this year. We've got a lot of work to do in the session or in the interim ahead. I do have the number of days that we have until the next legislative session starts. It's two hundred and fifteen days, so we'll be counting down those days. There is going to be a lot of work that we need to do. And also, we'll need to really recognize what's happening at the federal level and how that might trickle down to the way that the legislature looks at session in twenty twenty six. I hope that was a quick, quick enough flyover and I'm going to hand it back to Genesee.
That was excellent, Katie. So I will just touch lightly on the federal side of this presentation and then we can continue the conversation later. So pivoting to the other Washington, it is time for us to consider adopting an updated legislative agenda for the federal priorities. We usually.
Just a minute, Jess.
Yeah.
Let's just extend time so we can get through this.
If you'd like, of course.
Yeah, we're so close.
I make a motion to extend our meeting to ten thirty.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I think the picture of Mayor motivated her to continue.
Yeah.
You could be right. So we historically bring this to you usually in the quarter, the second quarter of each year because that gives us time to see the new makeup of Congress, also see what are the administration's priorities. Typically, we see a budget released from the administration, a budget proposal released sometime between February and April this year with the brand new administration coming in. It's coming a little later. It it came out only about a week ago. We're still doing kind of the fine tooth comb analysis of what it might mean. But that's a good time for us to really make sure that our agenda knows its audience. And so our audiences, our delegation at Congress, it's the administration and it's an articulation of our priorities. So this is usually the right time of year to refresh the way that we express our priorities and then take it to Washington, D C. So another excellent photograph.
I'm really motivated.
Briefly, I'll say that we are still learning about the new administration, how they want to, you know, what priorities are important to them and really how are we going to set ourselves up to be successful with them? Both, of course, you know, in the executive branch, that includes the agencies. We are really learning fast on our feet about how to be successful. It's important for us to leverage the partnership at the federal level. We're really trying to figure out what are the new relationships we need to build? What are the criteria they're looking at? And that both works kind of glass half full, also glass half empty. What are our risks? Where we currently receive federal funding? How do we really evaluate those risks and mitigate those both directly for the city and also for the community? In terms of earmark requests, the, because we only did a continuing resolution last year and we didn't adopt normal appropriations bills, it erased our fiscal year twenty twenty five earmarks. So we started fresh again in spring of twenty twenty six and Katie. And Katie led an excellent process to submit two requests. We're already getting positive feedback that those are, one is certainly moving forward, the other one is likely to move forward. And so those are, those are two of the ones that were moving forward last year. And so it only makes good sense because we know the delegation was interested in those. NLC, we usually visit. Councilmember Lee is our distinguished emissary to NLC. They have their major conferences in March and November, and those are key opportunities, particularly the Congressional Cities Conference, which is held in Washington, D.C. every March. We usually do our city-lid trip in June, and then the Bellevue Chamber fly-in is in early December. We usually have a couple of members attend that. And then, the relationship with our congressional office and delegation is truly a year-round relationship. We are talking with congressional offices and staff year-round. I think Katie hosted one of those staff people today. And so we are, we are always in conversation with those offices to be a resource to them, and then likewise, for them to be a resource to us. And so that is not something we do once a year, but something we are always doing. The federal legislative agenda pretty much has two components. It has a section on key priorities. It has a second section that is our federal policy statement that gives us really some latitude to work on a number of issues that we expect will be relevant for the year ahead. There is also included a reference to the city council vision. That is really to give us the flexibility for the things that we're not anticipating, things that might pop up six months from now, so that we, if it really is consistent with the city council's vision in strategic target areas, it lets us say this is in pursuit or in service of our vision, even if it's not specifically enumerated in the agenda. The key priority areas for 2025, 2026, the headings here are the same as last year. There is a lot of consistency. The things that were important to the city in 2024 continue to be important to us in 2025. What has changed is sometimes what we're asking for. I'll give you an example here around smart city technology. Bellevue was successful in winning a Smart City Grant Award from USDOT. So that makes us eligible for a Phase Two Grant Award for a much bigger dollar amount. So we've changed some of the content here, but it really is building on some of the priorities from the year prior. I'll call out just one or two updates in here. One is that we're calling out specifically the Lake Washington sewer lake lines. This has been a persistent issue for us. We were successful in moving an earmark request forward last year. We think we will probably have some success this year. And the idea here is to get some federal, kind of a toe-hold or some footprints on the lake lines, so we can come back in the future and really apply for some very serious grant money or low-interest loan money. Because the lake lines is a really significant capital project for the city. This is just for the planning and analysis phase to really get us in the door, and that's part of the idea here. The other thing that is new this year is that first subheading under the third category. So under, you've got your three headings, transportation and mobility, essential and sustainable infrastructure, utility infrastructure, again this year being called out as a top priority. And then, a new subheading under housing and safety net programs, and that is safety net and pass-through programs. That's an addition that we've added here, based on the experience we've had over the last few months. This is one of the places where we do have some exposure and risk, not just directly for the city, but more so for the local agencies and community-based organizations that we often are a pass-through in awarding federal dollars. Those are often HUD dollars or Community Development Block grants, as an example. And if those programs are going to be curtailed, it is going to be something that will impact the community. And so it's something we want to elevate and raise, because we're already hearing from human services providers, for example, that this is, small businesses, this is something important to them, they're worried about losing. And then I'll just click right along to next steps. Something I am elated to relay to you is that we are getting forward and preparing for our annual trip to Washington, D.C. We'll have meetings with our congressional delegation and with others on June 10th and 11th. Katie, do you want to introduce our new special guest in the audience?
I'd be happy to. Sitting behind me today is Chris Ramirez. Chris is here tonight, not as an official staff member yet, because he actually starts on Monday, May 19th. So I just want to thank him for being here this evening, and also let you know that he will be dedicated in federal international relations. He will be staffing you all when you're headed to, back to D.C. on June 10th and 11th, and also providing support to departments throughout the city as we really assess the federal climate, and also work on an international stage as well. So thank you for being here, Chris.
So you're going to see a lot more of Chris, and we are very excited to see a lot more of Chris. And so this is something we knew is important to you. The, as we continue to grow the city's federal profile and international profile, this is something that needs a dedicated body of work and a resource to you, as well as to the city as a whole. We are delighted to bring Chris on to this team. I think it is really going to be the thing we were missing. And he will join us for that trip in Washington, D.C. And so we'll learn on the ground, though he's not new at leading, leading those type of delegation trips. And so we're very excited. We will also continue to go through the appropriations process throughout the rest of the year. We will support those visits and touchpoints with the federal delegation. We will also prepare for the August recess, though those opportunities, as you can see in the photographs here, they pop up all year long, not just in August, because congressional members often have a district work period that is usually about a week per month. We are seeing them more and more often in the 41st and 48th, and for us federally, in the 1st and the 9th. So we are really excited to do that work. And the agenda, whenever you want to consider taking it up, is really kind of that true north for us. It is our eyes on the prize. Those are the things we want to reinforce and continue to really build momentum and coalition support for. And so we appreciate your discussion and consideration of that, either tonight or at a future meeting, ideally before June 9th.
Okay, thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Yes, councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks for the presentation. You know, while I know your work's never done, I think that what you've accomplished in the recently completed legislative session, among other things, is so important and impactful for the city. Thank you for your thorough, clear-eyed analysis of the current situation in D.C. There's a lot to be concerned about, but if we don't clearly understand where things are, we can't effectively advocate for where things need to be. I think the two funding requests make a lot of sense. I think our federal agenda is smart, and to the degree that it's supported in D.C., very impactful. I'm especially pleased to see that our federal policy statement strongly encourages support for some of our most vulnerable, threatened community members, refugees and asylum seekers. I think the council's own vision statement begins with, "Bellevue welcomes the world. Our diversity is our strength." And I'm glad that that important value is represented in our federal policy statement. I think this is likely to be an area that we will, we will need to continue to closely monitor and be ready to react in support of our community. We have some community members that are being denied their fundamental rights and others that are afraid they're next. As far as our, the state goes, I think our state legislative agenda, I would give an A+. I think we advocated for the right things. And I would give our intergovernmental relations team an A+ in effectively promoting our priorities. And while, while I understand the legislature had a difficult task in passing the state's budget, we didn't get all of the support that we really needed with regard to our priority requests. I hope that during the interim, we're able to impress upon our legislators that we need and deserve funding for the Grand Connection Crossing, the 520124 interchange, and more money for digital permitting. Now is the time to start thinking about the 2026 session, as I know you have, and how important it is to make up for missed opportunities. Of course, glad to see that 405167 corridor in the mountains to Sound Greenway work, get the funding they need to keep those projects moving forward. So I appreciate the support we did get, but clearly, we need more. We'll be back in Olympia in a little over six months. Hopefully, we can have even more success then. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vargova?
Yeah, very, very brief, more of an educational comment from me, to make sure I understand. And get your thoughts. Congratulations, great work, lots of plus-ones to what's already been said. When we think about the federal agenda, not the state as much, there are clearly distinct priorities that we have to advocate for that are really important to us. But there may also be sets of opportunities that have a higher likelihood of getting funded that may be distinct from our core priorities. How do you balance that? And what would be an example where we may increase the likelihood of getting federal support aligned with those priorities more centrally?
I'm gonna take a first crack at this, and Katie may have something to add. So I'll give you a, kind of a quick, two-part answer. One is that it's really important for us to be true to the city's priorities, so that we're making sure that we're reflecting what is important to us, even where there isn't a ripe opportunity in front of us. We want to be consistent about what's important to Bellevue. But we also want to be really mindful about our audience, and what are the opportunities really are in front of us? So we're trying to always find that sweet spot of being effective, right? How, how are we ultimately effective? Because that's what matters. Doesn't matter what you articulate if they're not buying what you're selling. So we want to be effective. And so an example of how we're changing that is the way that we're describing in this year's agenda, the Grand Connection. We are really playing up some of the strengths that we think will resonate with both our congressional delegation and with the administration, because we really think that the Grand Connection will help us optimize Bellevue as a job center, Bellevue as really maximizing the work you're doing in Wilberton, to really grow that as a housing place, and also really to make it an appealing connection to economic development and jobs from the east side of the city over to the west side. So and sometimes, it's a little bit of marketing to really be true to what are our priorities. I will say that the second part of that answer is that Katie, when the bipartisan infrastructure law was passed, I want to give her credit, she set up a pretty comprehensive system throughout the city to put together, what are all the different opportunities for us in the bipartisan infrastructure law? That work evolved a little bit when we passed the, Congress passed the Inflation Reduction Act. A lot of those opportunities with the new administration are not looking like they're going to be there anymore. So we've dialed back. Our staff time spent in pursuit of some of those opportunities, we just know they're going away. So we're not kind of tilting at windmills where we know that it's no longer relevant. We're really trying to redeploy the focus to the things that are opportunities that are still there. So some of that work is just really shifting to maybe the state opportunities for things like clean energy and sustainability that may be changing. But those could also still be clean energy jobs at the federal level. So we want to stay a little bit light on our feet. Want to add anything? Okay.
Oh, that's really great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to extend the meeting?
I extend the meeting till 10:40.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna take my turn here. I would really like our council to consider putting in a request for a national infrastructure utility bill.
It's, it's, it's inside the agenda, right, in that second section around essentially infrastructure.
Okay. And then, do we include vouchers also? I see that we have the, where is it?
Which type of vouchers, Mayor?
Housing vouchers.
Yes, you've got them, it is included.
Okay. When you did a little overview, it, it.
Yeah, yes, sorry, the slides are just the headings. But yes, under that first section around safety net and pass-through programs, we call out a number of voucher programs, specifically Section 8 and TANF and a few others.
Perfect. I just want to commend you on the TIF. That's like the biggest accomplishment, I think, that we got from the state, and that's going to help us move forward in a pretty fiscally challenging time. So good, good on you, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone has said all of the kudos, great job. I really believe your efforts and this council and the staff really are making us position as a leader at both regional and a state level, and also make us very successful to get funding at the federal level. You are all very skillful, you understand your landscape, the audience, the environment, the environmental factors. So kudos to Chris, thank you so much for being here. Cannot wait to learn from you in the, all of the experience that you bring to the table. Very exciting, I am aligned, and I can move to adopt the 2025, 2026 agenda, if, Mayor, you want to make a motion.
Okay, councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Lee. Kudos to your team, I appreciate what you've done, and good work. Also, welcome, Chris, we look forward to working with you. We're gonna do great things because of the changing environment. I think, I always believe, when there's change, there's opportunity. So we need to take advantage of it. Cease the moment, R-P-D-M. One thing I want to suggest, the Mayor mentioned of infrastructure funding. Specifically, I like to point out our emphasis. We heard our presentation from the King County WTD regarding our waste treatment system, and that is completely inadequate. And there's a lot of things that need to be done. And, you know, we eventually have to pay the piper. And so that takes time, takes lots of money. And right now, the ratepayers are paying for it, and we cannot fix it unless we have federal government support. And this is a national dilemma situation. So I think we need to work together with the rest of the cities in the region, in the King County, starting with King County. That's impact on our housing, I mean, cost, our environment, you know, all is tied together. So I would like to see we put more emphasis on it, working with partners, stakeholders, obviously, starting with King County. I believe that they are already on board, but I think we can provide the leadership at the local government position. So I would like to work with suburban cities, with AWC, with, you know, the national stakeholders, and of course, our congressional delegation. You know, we're still the most powerful representatives in the Congress, in our congressional delegation. So let's work and take opportunity and go for it. So I'm looking forward to making a big progress. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt the 2025, 2026 federal agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're passed, and with that, our meeting is done. Thank you.